Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commission as well as staff that are here this evening. From the Commission's standpoint, to my far right is Gina Morgenstein, to my immediate right is Jeff Cohen, to my immediate left is Rocco Madarazzo, and next to Rocco is Armin Menard, and on the outside position is the newest member of our Commission is Steve Allenson. So Steve, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We look forward to seeing you for many meetings and many years to come. From the staff's standpoint, at the table to my left is Cynthia Kleist, who is our Recording Secretary, and next to Cynthia is Casey Costello, our Town Planner, and I'm Jim Sechter, the Chairperson of this Commission. I'm going to dispense with the approval of our minutes of July 10th, as there's two Commission members that were at our July meeting that are unable to make this evening's meeting, so we'll carry those minutes over to our September meeting. And it brings us to our first item on -- well, before I get to the first item on our agenda, let me announce that there are two items on the agenda that are not going to be heard this evening at the request of the applicants. The first one is under New Business, item number five, which is a site plan/traffic circulation modification for LaFawn at 968 Yale Avenue. Again, there will be no action taken on that. And the other one is item number seven, which is a site plan/ dental office/retail space ignori at 1163 South Broad Street. Again, there will be no action taken on that, so if there's any members of the public that are here this evening for those specific applications, again, those won't be heard, but certainly if you'd like to stay around for the rest of the meeting, you're more than welcome. Again, now it brings us to our first item, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit revision for power generation, Wallingford Energy II at 115 John Street. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, you threw me off there, French. If you'd just please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice number 400-15R, special permit revision power generation facility for Wallingford Energy LLC to modify the approved landscape berm adjacent to new turbines at 115 John Street. It's dated July 28, 2017. We have a letter to Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission from Department of Engineering received or dated August 10, 2017. A letter dated August 3, 2017, to Brandon Paul Peter? From Casey Costello, Town Planner.
If I could just interrupt for a second, Rocco. Excuse me. Would the applicant please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation, and then Mr. Madarazzo will continue noting the correspondence. Thank you.
A photograph, Wallingford Energy LLC, I guess a visual site plan modification. Letter dated August 9, 2017, to Casey Costello, Town Planner. From Brandon Paul Peter. Two additional photos, Thermospa Access Road, one marked original, one marked revised. And that would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. Before I ask you to introduce yourself, as far as the members that'll be voting this evening, it'll be the three Commission members, Mr. Cohen, myself, and Mr. Madarazzo. And I'd ask Mrs. Morgenstein if you would please sit in, and Mr. Menard if you would sit in at least until Mr. Benoit, if he does come to the meeting, so if you'd sit in for him until Mr. Benoit would show up. So at that point in time, sir, if you'd please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Yeah, excuse me. My name is Gordon Holt. I am the Senior Project Manager for the owner of the Wallingford Energy Facility. And I'm actually basically the owner's rep, overseeing the construction of the hired contractors, the new facilities.
And if you'd please explain your application.
Yes. We're looking, in the plan, we had a berm that was located adjacent to the new sound wall that we just installed. The old berm that was there before was offset from the old sound wall, which made a visual difference. With the new berm adjacent to the new sound wall, it kind of defeats the utility of having a berm there. We're not opposed to putting a berm there, we just don't think from a practical standpoint in the utility of running a power plant that it's needed. In addition, there's two auxiliary transformers that how the berm would put in would kind of land lock the transformers for future maintenance. So that's the primary reason of us asking us to eliminate the berm.
Okay. Commission members, questions for the applicant? Anyone, everybody?
I do. I do.
Mrs. Morgenstein.
I guess I'm just pretty befuddled by your photos here. So the building has a new look with this sound wall.
The building has a new look?
Maybe if you could come up and just show us what you're -- I'm really not clear what berm and what we're talking about. So you've got all these very fine plans, but you've got all these photos.
The berm is going to be...
Please speak into the microphone if you would, sir.
The berm is going to be basically about as high as that fence right next to the wall, and then the trees would be, I don't know how tall they'll grow, but another 10 to 15 feet. So, and right now, there's a bunch of trees here on this side of the lot, and this is actually a private road. It's not a public road. So the berm is, you know, the, again, the utility of the berm is not...
Is this a view showing us what it would become?
Yeah.
Kind of a big abstract idea here. Okay, thank you.
It's kind of hard to appreciate. I know Casey came out today and took a look. Once you're standing right next to it, I think you can appreciate it more.
Yeah.
Anyone else? I know in the information that you've sent to us, you indicated that to install a berm, there would be a cost to it, and one of the items, let me ask you this, the berm that was in place before, was that irrigated? Was there an irrigation system with that?
This was.
So there was an irrigation system with that one?
There was.
Okay. And Casey, as far as your comments on this?
So you have my letter and my comments to the Commission on this application. I mean, from our standpoint, I think it's something that you required when the additional turbines were approved in addition to the wall. The wall is very nice. They did a nice job on the wall. I still think that it would be nice to have some landscaping to soften that, to soften up the appearance and as it's sort of visible from the adjacent properties, because screening requirements apply to adjacent properties in addition to the public right-of-way. From the road, you know, it's certainly set back quite a ways from the right-of-way, but I think with the right trees, the berm might be helpful.
Good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public would like to speak on the application? If they would, please come forward, state your name and address and your comments. I guess bringing it back, I don't see anyone from the public would like to speak on the application. I would tend to agree with our Town Planner. You know, the berm was in place, and I realize it was in a little bit different position, obviously, because now you've put two more units on there, but even it's been kind of reoriented a little bit. I would tend to agree with our Town Planner. I think it softens up, you know, the appearance of the building and of the wall there. And again, as you'd indicated, you're not opposed to, you know, having it, having the berm, if you would, reinstalled. So, you know, from my perspective, I would certainly not be in favor of approving the revision to the, you know, to the special permit. But I know there's other Commission members, what they may or may not feel. Anyone like to express their opinion? Start here on the right and move to the left. Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yeah, I guess the only question I have is if it becomes more costly because you have to bring up the land, if just simply planting trees would make it more affordable to you, but to have a fence and a building really isn't in keeping with what we require of other business owners, so I think I agree with Casey.
Jeff Cohen?
Yeah, I'll be honest with you. When I went through Casey's letter, it seemed to me that the big objection was just the cost of the irrigation system. And I do think the berm would be a benefit to the surrounding area.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other Commission members, Rocco?
I would also agree with the comments of the Commission and Casey as well.
And not to leave you out, Mr. Menard.
One question for Casey.
Sure.
Has the neighbors ever complained about noises?
No. No, they have a big sound wall that is very effective. So I think the question is that really the primary neighbor is the old Thermospa's building and the Allegheny-Ludlam property, which isn't being used right now, and they're partially using for staging. Thermospa's is, you have somebody, hopefully, or somebody that's moving into Thermospa's now. So it hasn't really come up before. They're probably far, those buildings are probably far enough away that they wouldn't complain.
Okay. All right. Again, before I close the public hearing, I'll give you an opportunity, if you'd like to make any last comments on the application.
Yeah. Can we work with the Town Planner or somebody to, so those transformers have able access to, you know, for maintenance purposes or getting a truck out there? Again, when I said it's going to get landlocked, the berm is going to basically surround these two transformers, and if they were to be, you know, compromised, you know, lightning strike or, you know, damage or something, it's, I don't want to bring a bulldozer out to...
Oh, sure, later, yeah.
So we can work something out, just so we can have like a path, a truck path, I guess, to get to that corner.
From my opinion, I think that's certainly something we can accommodate you with. Casey, do you feel that that's something that can be accomplished?
Yeah, I mean, based on, it may require a reduction in the size of the berm and the number of trees, but as long as you're comfortable with that, that's something we can talk about as a field change.
Sure. Other Commission members, agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. You know, that being said, again, if there's no further comments from the Commission members, Casey, if you have no further comments, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit revision power generation for Wallingford Energy II to remove the previously required landscape berm to the north of the new power turbines at 115 John Street, as shown on plans entitled "Wallingford Energy Facility Expansion Project, 115 John Street, Wallingford, Connecticut", dated August 1, 2016, updated to 11/28/16, and as represented in the letter from Brandon Paul Peter, LS Power Development LLC, to Casey Costello, Town Planner, dated August 9, 2017, subject to one condition of approval that...
Is there confusion about the motion?
I think there's confusion in the motion. That's correct.
The, if you vote to approve, you're approving the removal of the berm. So if you deny it, the berm stands, and then we can work with the applicant to make a field change.
To do a field change, and that's something that you can work with the applicant.
Yeah. If you make a motion to approve it, that would allow them to remove the berm.
Yeah, we've approved it. We've approved the removal. And it would be appropriate to put in the motion, we're allowing them to, we're allowing it to remove it, and then we're reorienting the berm. So simply by denying it, we're denying the motion. However, as we've discussed here, we are giving the Town Planner and the applicant the ability to discuss doing a field change, which would not require this Commission's approval, to do some reorientation of the berm. Correct?
Yes.
Good.
Okay, so...
Motion to...
I'd like to make a motion to deny the Wallingford Energy special permit.
We have a motion on the application. We have a second, second by Mr. Madarazzo, beginning voting with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been denied, but as again, as we've said, if you would consult with our Town Planner, I think there is some flexibility for you to do some reorientation of the berm.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Moving on, our next public hearing is a special permit structures exceeding 50 feet in height for Ferdy Technologies at 155 East Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for her presentation. And again, Mr. Madarazzo, please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a legal notice number 409-17, special permit structures exceeding 50 feet in height for Ferdy Technologies to construct three material distribution elevators totaling 375 square feet, 125 square feet each at 155 East Street. This is dated August 2, 2017. We have an application number 409-17, dated 7/26/17. This is signed by the Fire Marshal. Application, interdepartmental referral application 409-17, signed by the Environmental Planner. Inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello, Town Planner, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated August 10, 2017. Application for special permit, application number 409-17, dated 7/19/2017, and a set of plans dated 7/1/02.
That's it? Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. Again, if the applicant would please introduce herself and begin her presentation.
Good evening. I would just like to start saying that English is not my first language, so if I say something that doesn't make sense to you, just please tell me, and I'll do my best to just correct it.
I'm sure it's not going to be a problem.
Okay. So my name is Cluzi Vayanko. I'm here to introduce you to a company that's called Ferdy Technologies, which is a family-owned company, was founded by my father in 1987. We actually just, we blend fertilizer for the golf courses, retail market, landscape professionals, and everything like this. And we do have some retail market also. We've been serving the New England region for decades now. We just want to be closer to our customers. We do have some big distributors in Connecticut. So that's why we wanted to add Wallingford to our facilities, because we already have four facilities, two in the U.S. and two in Canada. We have one in St. Michelle, Quebec. We have one in Niagara Falls, Ontario. We have one in Phoenix, Arizona, and one in Statesville, North Carolina. So basically, what we do is just, we store raw materials, we blend them, we blend them together, we bag them, and then we ship it out. So that's pretty much all we do. So why I'm here today is to get a special permit for, we have three towers that are going to be higher than 50 feet and lower than 70 feet. So one is for receiving raw materials. So the truck comes in, like, in bulk. So it goes in an elevator, and then it goes in the compartments inside the building. So it needs, we need an elevator going up to 54 feet for that one, for the receiving elevator, and we're going to need two more elevators for the bagging area, for the production area. We're going to have two line of production, so that's why we need two elevators that go up 69 feet. So I would appreciate your support in getting us the special permit for these towers.
What you're requesting is a special permit for the three towers?
Yes.
And you mentioned one was, the lowest one was, did you say 52 feet?
54.
54.
So it's 30, it's 23 feet above the ceiling, and the other, the two, the two other ones are going to be 38 feet above the, so it's 31 feet plus 38 is going to be outside the building.
Okay, thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Seems like a fairly straightforward application. Casey, any comments?
Just that typically what we're looking for when you have these special permits for higher structures, the reg does limit it to 10% of the area of the building, which this is combined, the towers are certainly under, and that they're at least as far away from the property as they are tall, which is the case for all three of these.
And again, where the property's located, as far as around, I mean, it's an industrial area. You have the old steel mill there, and we just mentioned a power plant, and then we have some of the West Side Field and all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I think this is an example of exactly what that regulation is indicating.
And plus, the property slopes down from the street. Okay, good. Again, this is a public hearing. Any members of the public would like to speak on the application, please come forward, name an address and your comments. Take the gentleman in front and then a gentleman in back, please.
Tim Ryan from the Economic Development Commission in town. We've been working with the Valencors on this project for a while, and I just want to say that the EDC supports this application in its entirety. Claudia mentioned that they have a facility in Phoenix, Arizona, one in Statesville, North Carolina. For your edification, I have contacted my counterparts in both of those communities. Ferdy is a solid company, no complaints, no issues, and I want you to know that we do our due diligence before anybody comes to town, frankly. So it's a great use for that particular facility. As Chairman Sechter noted or mentioned, that it slopes down, so the amount of space that these towers will go above the roof line, I don't even think you'll see them, because I don't even think they'll go beyond the trees. But in this project also, several months back, we had the Fire Marshal, the Fire Chief, we had planning and zoning, building, water sewer, inland wetlands, all in the same room at the same time, introduced them to this project, and they understand it in its entirety and intimately, and are all in support. So I just wanted to throw our support behind it as well.
Good, thank you. And again, a gentleman in the back, please.
Larry Morgenstein, South Main Street. I'm just curious, are there any environmental impacts for this industry and concerns?
No, actually, because as I said, it's just, we don't manufacture anything. We just receive the raw materials, and we just blend them together. So there's no spills, no spills, no, no impact on the environment, because all we do is just receive the materials, blend them together, and then bag them in like 50-pound bags, and then just ship it out. So there's not, we don't change anything. The raw material stays the same, it's just mixed together and creating a formula of fertilizer.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Other members, yes?
Just Jim Wolfe. I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission. Just to add to that last comment, when Tim did the research on this, their product comes in, and it's like waxed or...
Coated?
Coated. So it, you know, and Tim did do a lot of work and research as far as the environment and so forth in the company, and I got to tell you that this company seems to be a real good fit for that building. It just looks like an easy match, and we would definitely support them. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Other members from the public? Seeing none now, just bring it back to the applicant. Again, if you'd like to make any final comments, again, you don't feel compelled to make any.
I just like to comment on what Casey said. I think it doesn't even add up to 1% of the whole building, because the building is very big, and these elevators are usually like two feet by four feet, so it's like eight square feet per elevator. So it's very, it's a very small portion of the whole building. So that's all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Casey, any final comments? Any Commission members, before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing? Mr. Madarazzo?
I just had a question. Are you utilizing the entire building?
I'm sorry?
Are you utilizing the entire building?
Yes. Well, a portion is going to be used for storing the raw materials. It might be like 1/6 of the building, and then there's another portion, maybe 1/6 again of the building, that's going to be used for the production lines, and everything else is going to be, going to be used for storage.
Okay, if there's no further questions, let's entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit, structure height greater than 50 feet for Ferdy Technologies to construct three material elevator structures at heights of 69 feet, 10 inches, 69 feet, 10 inches, and 55 feet, as part of a new fertilizer compounding/packaging/distribution use at 155 East Street, as shown on plans entitled Thermospa's, Inc., 155 East Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated January 6, '02, as updated by the applicant and received by the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 26, 2017, subject to the following conditions of approval: comments of the Fire Marshal dated August 14, 2017, comments of the Environmental Planner dated August 14, 2017, and comments of the Water Sew Department dated August 10, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved, and I would like to just thank you and your family for deciding to relocate to Wallingford. Certainly on behalf of the Commission, we appreciate it. I'm sure on behalf of the taxpayers in this town, we also appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and thank you for welcoming us, too. So, thank you.
Great to see that building getting used.
Yeah.
Moving on to Old Business. Number three is a site plan multi-family conversion CBL zone to DeCarlo at 143 South Main Street. Again, Mr. Madarazzo, please note all correspondence for the record. If the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. for the record. The applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we have a memo to the planning zoning, uh, Casey Costello from the Fire Marshal, Michael Godelski, uh, dated June 22nd, 2017. Interdepartmental, um, referral application 221-17, uh, dated 6/19/17, signed by the Fire Marshal. Uh, another department, um, referral application 221-17 submitted, dated 6/19/17, um, signed by the chief engineer. Inner office memorandum to Casey Costello, Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated June 30th, 2017. A floor plan, uh, dated, uh, July 10th, actually dated, um, 6/12/17. That was a revised plan. That was the revised plan. I believe an original, just the original plan. I think it's just a plot plan. Um, I don't see a date on it. Oh, I'm sorry. Six, uh, 1617. A letter from, um, Michael Delowski to Casey Costello, Town Planner, dated, um, July 26th, 2017. And this would be just a, uh, a letter.
Historic Preservation Trust.
From the Historic Preservation Trust, uh, to James Seiter, Chairman, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, signed, uh, Jerry Farrell, Jr. And that would be it.
Thank you, Mr. Manarazo. The applicant would please introduce himself and, uh, begin his presentation, please.
Uh, my name is Christian DeCarlo. I am the owner of, uh, CN Jones Homes LLC, which is the entity that owns the property known as 143 South Main Street. Uh, we are looking to convert a single family with an accessory apartment into,
If you could please pull the microphone a little bit closer to you, sir. Thank you.
Uh, into a three-family, uh, residential. Uh, the, does the commission want me to, uh, go into any of the design plans or are we primarily going to be talking about parking?
Well, I think if you, again, just give us a brief overview.
Sure.
Tell us as far as with the design, as far as what you're, what you're proposing for the conversion. And then you can discuss the parking, if you would please.
Sure. The, uh, first and second floors already have, um, existing apartments. Uh, the second floor was an accessory apartment. So we plan on redoing that to make that a full apartment. And then the third floor will become a full apartment. Um, there are two means of egress. The back stairwells are existing. Um, they just need to be modified to fit, um, current building code because they were built way back when. The front staircase covers the first and second floors. Um, and an additional new staircase from the second to the third floor and the front entryway would need to be constructed to make, uh, the second means of egress for the, uh, third floor apartment. Uh, in addition to the, um, interior modifications, uh, to the exterior, we would have to provide, uh, six parking spaces. Uh, we have, um, put five parking spaces in the rear to the, uh, south side of the, um, garage and two additional spaces in the garage. Uh, the parking spaces are able to be seen from around the corner. Um, so there's not a real issue with the oncoming and outgoing traffic as when you're backing up from the spaces, there's more than, um, 18 feet, uh, before you would enter the parking lane.
Okay. Thank you. Before I ask commission members for questions, Casey, I noticed on one of the attachments, and that's from the, uh, it's 3B from the Fire Marshal. In his comments, he just says C is attached and.
It's in reference to 3A. So they got flipped.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commission members with questions for the, uh, for Sure. Mr. Menard?
I'm reading about this, uh, boundary problems. I'm wondering if this has been a.
The boundary markings, you mean?
Yes.
The, uh, town engineering department did come out and do the, uh, front markers and there's two pins in the, um, rear of the property.
Has been surveyed?
Uh, no, not yet, sir.
Uh, before I guess may perhaps follow up on Mr. Menard's, uh, question to you and fairness to you. Were you, or you in receipt of a letter that we received from the Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust that was given to us? And if not, Casey, if you would, and perhaps if you could take just a, maybe a few minutes to review that because I think that's the nexus of Mr. Uh,
Yes.
I'll say, I guess if you'd like to address that.
I, I mean, I guess the only, um, comment that I would have is that the, um, the trust had it surveyed just a several years ago. And I don't think there was any dispute on that side of the, um, property. But, I mean, I would certainly have a survey if that's required. I don't have, I don't have a problem with that. That's not.
I think that that's, I can't speak for all the commission members, but clearly after looking at this letter, that's one of the things that I would be leaning toward because there seems to be an issue with, while there was survey was done as far as the pins or the markers that were put in, if in fact those are in the same, excuse me, those are in the same location now than what they were when it was originally done.
Sure.
So with that, are any commission members, any further questions before I go out to the pub? Yes. Mrs. Morganstein?
Yeah. So my question, I think, um, would be in reference to this as well. I, I see that there are certainly many trees that have been taken down. And I guess it's now clear that that's partly because of parking need. Um, some very close to the property line. So I would suspect that we'll hear from the historic preservation people. I see a few of them here. Um, but those, those trees on that line, you know, you may well be kind of right at that line is what it appears.
I mean, it would be close. I mean, we are going under the, um, the tree people that were out there were going under the assumption those were the correct lines. The engineering department did mark the front pins. Um, and it, you know, it was a sh- straight line to where they took down the trees. Um, none of the stuff near the pins or the current markings were touched.
Again, I, I'm supposing that we'll hear from their concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, this is, it's not a public hearing. However, we always do allow the public to speak on all of our applications. So if there's any members of the public would like to come forward, please state your name and address and your comments.
A2 survey. Jim, I think the, I think we should now go forward with this until we get an A2 survey.
Well, but we've had some members, yeah, I understand that. But we have had some members of the public that would like to speak, I suspect, on the application. I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak. Yes, gentleman up front. Name an address.
I do agree with Mr. Menard. Jerry Farrell, Jr. appearing as the president of the Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust, which is the owner of 153 South Main Street, the historic Johnson Mansion and Silver Museum. I'm here with other members of the trust board, um, to oppose this application in the strongest of terms. The trust shares a common border with Mr. DeCarlo. Um, the trust had a survey done several months ago by Roslin from Winterborne Associates. Markers were placed. Recently, Mr. DeCarlo bought 143 South Main. Rather than communicating with me as the president, he approached a group of volunteers in the backyard of the museum. He told them that he had moved our markers, that they were wrong. He told them that he had had a survey done and it showed that our survey was wrong. After talking with him, we looked and indeed, some of our markers were missing. We thereupon went to the Wallingford Police Department, which investigated. And I've submitted a copy of the police report. We're not looking to tangle with anyone. However, when someone tells you that your survey is wrong and they remove the legally placed markers, it's usually the first step in an attempt to steal your property. We therefore needed to deal with it as such. After reporting the matter to the police, we then went to town hall to investigate Mr. DeCarlo's claims. We were unable to find any survey, which he or anyone working for him had filed with the town clerk, as he told us. And last I knew, the engineering department doesn't come out and do surveys for private parties, is what was represented. We were unable to find any building permits taken out at the building department, even though work has been occurring on the property. We were able to find this application for a site plan approval. We believe his application should be not denied. First of all, at the time I reviewed the application, it left blank the name of his mystery surveyor and supposed survey. Secondly, he submits to what amounts to no site plan at all. There is nothing for the neighbors or the public to see, which shows if he intends to increase the size of the building, where he's going to put fire escapes, where paved parking is going. There's, you know, this pencil drawing, but it doesn't tell you what's paved and what's not. Where landscaping is going, if there will be anything to prevent stormwater runoff or erosion from the property, where the snow is going to be plowed. We're extremely close. I mean, that's one of the reasons why knowing where the boundary is extremely crucial. It's very clear that under section 7.4, he needs to submit at the very least an A2 survey and a site plan map. We would also argue that pursuant to 7.4 and 6.11G, he should be required to submit a landscaping plan, a parking plan, and sedimentation and erosion control maps. In the last five days, as Mrs. Morganstein pointed out, every mature tree on his property has been removed. Who knows who owns them? Mr. DeCarlo told the group of volunteers that he owns several multi-family homes in Wallingford. It would be helpful if the Planning and Zoning Commission could ask the Fire Marshal if he has any enforcement issues at any other properties. He represents that there is an accessory apartment there. A review of your own file, Mr. Chairman, would show that that's not correct, that back in 1995, the accessory apartment was abandoned, that Mr. Cluley and Mrs. Pierce wrote to the Planning and Zoning Commission to ask, to tell them that it was no longer needed and they were in effect giving it back to the town. So we have multiple issues here. I don't know why this application is going forward when, you know, we have him in our backyard telling us that he owns part of it. So for all of these reasons, we would ask that he be required to come back with some of these items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public would like to speak on the application?
Uh, Chairman Seiter, members of the commission, Casey Costello. Uh, my name's Gerald E. Farrell, Sr. And I'm not speaking here in any official capacity nor as an attorney. I'm simply here as the husband of Mary Ann Farrell, who owns 106 South Whittlesey Avenue, which is property directly in back and borders on the Silver Museum Historic Preservation Trust property. Uh, my wife is opposed to this application because as the commission is probably aware, there are no storm sewers whatsoever in South Main Street in front of this property, that there is no place to dispose of water. That if the applicant has a large paving project for several parking areas making impervious area, that water can only go downhill. Water seldom runs uphill. It'll run downhill onto my neighbor's property and our property. And that will be true forever and ever. And again, the applicant chose to cut down many trees, which might've absorbed some of the water. And I join in Historic Preservation Trust's request that a sedimentation plan be required before any application here is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members from the public? Yes?
Hello, I'm Jean Garcia. I live at 126 North Street. I am a board member of the Preservation Trust. I'm also an alternate member on the Historic Properties Commission. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Preservation Trust and also myself as a concerned citizen that so many of our historic homes in town have been turned into boarding houses or multi-family homes. This property was part of Franklin Johnson's property at one point. It was then sold to the Jones family. This is a historic home. To have it be changed from a one family to a multi-family would destroy the historic value of this property. Not only that, I was there the day that we spoke to Mr. DeCarlo. And I am neither confused or misunderstood that he told us he removed the middle property marker of our survey. We have three of them. One borders our fence line up against the, uh, street. The other one was in the middle, which is the one that got removed. And the third one borders up against our, um, brush line, where some of the trees have been taken down. I did go to the police department. I know he was cited for removing the property marker. Not only that, he then took that property marker and put it on the property to the house, if you're looking from the street to the right of it. And I spoke to the gentleman that owned that house and he actually questioned why that property marker was there. He did not put it there. And it's two feet from where the pin, where the property marker that Mr. DeCarlo said that the engineering department put up.
Yes.
Um, it's two feet away from that one onto someone else's property. Not only that, but the spray paint is now on our 150-year-old historic wall and it's neon pink. Now, I'm not sure if that's a town issue, um, but that's something that we as a nonprofit organization are going to have to now pay for. Not only that, but in the future, because he wants to turn this into a three-family home, there's insurance risks. So we're either going to have to put fence up or we're going to have to put plantings, which now we're going to have to have the, um, surveyor come back out, which is going to be an additional cost to us, which is a nonprofit. That's all.
Thank you. Other members from the public?
I think we already approved it being a three-family.
Yes, gentleman up front.
Uh, my name is Rich Freeman. I own the property right next to 143. I own 135 South Main Street. And I echo some of the concerns that have already been raised. Also, the trees that came down changed our view forever. So I don't know if there's a plan later on to put up some kind of a fencing, some kind of a shrubbery barrier or something along that line. And I'm also not sure how long or how wide the drive will be going forward. Uh, cause where the pin is in relation to the driveway, there's probably about six inches or less. Didn't measure it, couldn't tell you for sure. And also from where the stake that they were mentioning before was, it was about two feet. So I'm not sure what the plan is as far as the width of the driveway. So I would like to have that clarified as well. And I would appreciate a survey. I was, that would be excellent to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members from the public? Seeing none, Casey, I'd just like to bring it back to you before I ask for further comments from commission members. If you could please comment on just on the quality of the application, because there were, you know, some questions raised by, uh, members of the public concerning, you know, especially the drainage issues. I know the survey is another issue, but, uh, as far as the drainage issue and really the quality of the, of the application, if you could please comment on that. And if there's other things that perhaps after listening to some of these comments, we may want to require.
Sure. Um, so this is one of the few zones in town that does allow for multi-family conversion. Um, so the conversion itself, the change from a one to a three is permitted by right, provided that you could, basically that you can provide sufficient parking. Um, typically when it's, when the change is Typically, when it's, when the change is primarily a change of use and it's occurring within the building, we waive a lot of the site plan requirements. Your regs do allow you to do that, because where, in situations where nothing, nothing's moving or changing, we don't necessarily need to know, don't necessarily need more information about where the property lines are. One of the things that I had talked to the applicant about, and I was going to recommend, or I was originally going to recommend as a condition of approval, is that he worked with the town engineer regarding the grading and the drainage, and submit a final plan for that. So I, I am aware that that's, you know, the, the new parking is very close to the property line, so that is something that we talked about. The other thing I would, I guess, note about this is, again, typically, it's common for us, for you, to waive the majority of the site plan requirements when it's a primarily a residential, like, change of use. In this case, because you're now aware that there are questions about the property lines, my comfort level with moving forward is lower than it was before. So now you're being asked to act on something, and you have reason, more reason, to be uncertain about where exactly the property lines are. So on the, on the other side, you know, I will say, it's up to the property owner, it's up to the applicant to make a representation. So if they make an incorrect representation to you, it is on them. But again, since we know it's a question, I think it's better to, to head it off at the pass. The applicant said he wouldn't object to having a survey done, so I think that's probably the way to move forward, and that way, if you want to see the grading and drainage plans ahead of time, it'll give him some time to come up with that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was thinking. Certainly, again, you've, you've indicated your agreeable to having a survey done on the property, and I think that clearly after listening to the, you know, the comments from some of the members of the public, it seems that that is a very prudent thing to do. The other, in my mind, looking at just the drainage issues, I'd like to see, as part of, I'd like to see a plan showing the drainage, and again, having our town engineer review those plans with you. I'd also like to see on the plan just some of the landscaping that's there, and what is being proposed, and I don't believe anything is being proposed, but if you are proposing something and you may consider doing that, I'd also like to see that on the plans. But that's just, again, that's, that's my opinion. Other commission members, how do people feel? Mrs. Morgenstein?
Yeah, so as I'm looking here, I live very nearby, so I walk by this every day. As I'm looking at your drawing here, and you've got the parking places, you're not giving me a depth to the property line, you're giving us a depth west to east. So this 55 feet west to east? What is the distance between the parking spots and your perceived parking line? Is there room to put shrubs?
There's four feet between the edge of the, between where the wheel stops would go and the property line.
Yeah, that's what I thought. There's not much space there. And I honestly, it's, it's sort of a shared driveway, if I recall, to the back lot? No?
No, that's on the other property.
That's, the neighbors have the shared driveway. And this perception of a room for 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 cars, obviously you've measured it out. It's funny, because she used to just park one car there, and it did not really seem that there was much room. Is the driveway currently paved, or is it gravelled?
Yes, there's currently a paved driveway that goes from the front of the property to the garage.
And turns there.
And turn, yes, and there's a little turn about eight feet.
So you're making that turn deeper towards the Johnson mansion?
It would be deeper, and it would be deeper going towards the back of the property.
Both ways. You're coming closer to their property line and further back. And yes, I would agree that I'm always one for pervious surfaces rather than impervious, and so as the engineer and you work this out, the less pavement, you know, the better. Thank you.
Thank you. Other, thank you, other commission members. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty much in agreement with all the comments that, you know, it sounds like you do have to get a survey just to, you know, answer all the questions. You know, on, on your little map here, the driveway looks, you know, fairly well-defined to me. I'm not sure what, what, you know, a member of the audience had as a question there. But just to reiterate, you know, next time you come back with drainage plan, grading plan, and, you know, map out the driveway a little more details. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commission members? Mr. Madarazzo?
I would just agree with Casey and the rest of the commission, and of course, you, Mr. Chairman, regarding an A2 survey at this point, before we move forward with anything regarding this application.
Good. All right. Casey, you have some final comments, I believe, here? Had your hand up?
Just one comment to add to make sure that everybody understands. If there does turn out to be some sort of discrepancy in the property line, so if the surveys don't line up, the town, the town has no authority over private property line disputes, so presumably that will have to be addressed in some manner in order for the application to move forward, but hopefully they will match.
Sure. I guess with that, I think you have some good direction from the commission as far as what we're looking at or looking for as far as an, you know, an A2 survey on the property, looking for a grading and drainage plan. And also, I'd like to see also what the landscaping is presently, and if there is any additional landscaping, or fencing, or anything of the like that, you know, you may be.
Or the adjacent properties?
Well, no, I, yes, on the adjac, if, I mean, you've heard some.
I mean, I'm, I'm confused as to why you'd be, does, I mean, landscaping for planning and zoning seems weird on a private residence. I'm just.
I just like to see, I like to see what it's.
Okay, I mean, I could have him draw.
And again, as far, I guess, and also, again, I'd like to see that, and if you're proposing any, any additional. I'm not saying that you are, but you've heard some comments from the members of the public and some of the concerns they've addressed. Whether you, you know, whether or not you'd like to, you know, address those concerns, that's obviously your option.
And I could address that with the parties involved and.
Yeah, exactly. And so I would just encourage you to have a conversation with them. I'm not saying that you have to do something, but again, I, I think it may be beneficial to, you know, engage that, engage those individuals.
Okay.
So I think with that, you have some direction. That being the case, I'd entertain a motion to continue this application. Casey, our next meeting is September? And I'd entertain a motion to continue this application to our meeting of September 11th.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue site plan, DeCarlo, 143 South Main Street, to our September 11th meeting.
Do we have a motion on the application? Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Madarazzo, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
And yes, hopefully we'll see you next month with the requested items. Have a good evening, sir. Brings us on to our next item. It's new business. It's a site plan accessory apartment for Asklar, and I apologize if I've mispronounced your name, at Fort Gina Lane. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin presentation. And Casey, do you know if the applicant is here this evening?
Asklar, it's for Edgerton Road?
This is Fort Gina Lane.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, this is Fort Gina Lane.
And seeing no takers, we will move down our agenda, and we'll now go down to number, and Casey, were we anticipating the applicant to be here this evening, or I take it they may not have?
Yes, yes, they both, they have been told that they are supposed to be here, so we'll just.
Perhaps they may show up a little bit later this evening. Okay, yeah, we'll go down to a, it's a site plan accessory apartment for Manginelli at 36 Edgerton Road, and I believe the young lady's here. Mr. Madarazzo, please note all correspondence for the record, if you would, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have a letter to Kimberly, is it Manginelli?
Manginelli.
Signed by Casey Costello, town planner, dated July 31, 2017. We have a application 224-17 dated 7/7/17, signed by the Fire Marshal, and we have a floor plan with no date. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. If you'd please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
My name is Kimberly Manginelli. I live at 36 Edgerton Road. I bought a family home back in 2006. The adjacent apartment that we're speaking of was already in existence by my aunt, and she lived there until her health failed, and she moved out, and basically the apartment's been empty. So my husband and I are considering selling the property, went to gather information and found out that it was never approved by the town of Wallingford, so that's why we're here.
Okay, so it's an accessory apartment that was not, was not approved? And again.
Yep, back in the 90s.
Sure, and you mentioned, when you purchased the house, you purchased it from your aunt?
My aunt, my father's sister, and I was always under the impression.
And you were, yes, you were under the.
Yeah, and lived there, I mean, I grew up in that house, so my oldest cousin shared the home with my aunt. My cousin passed, my aunt wanted to stay on, and we were looking to buy, and at the time, you know, we all lived together, like I said, until my aunt's health and her husband's health failed.
And you were under the impression that it was a, was an approved accessory apartment?
Always, yep.
And I suspect because you were family members, you probably didn't feel there was a need to do any further investigation?
Nope, never.
And you said, once your aunt passed away, then this has not been occupied since that time?
No, not at all. Nope.
Okay. Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Casey, any question? I noticed this one thing, Casey, you had just some questions as far as the layout. I thought you, you mentioned it, what was, what was presented may not quite match up, and I guess by just one issue of your concern, not concern, but issue, just the square foot, the square footage that's being shown, the 596, that that's accurate, or there may be a slight adjustment to it?
Yeah, so after I made that comment, they gave me a revised plan based on the assessor's information. I went, I already went out and did the inspection, since it's already there, and I think the numbers actually come out to be somewhere in between the two, based on the layout that exists physically. So I calculated it as 760 square feet.
So it's 760 square feet, and that's our motion read, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the public like to comment on the application? Seeing none, if you'd like to make any final comments, again, you don't necessarily have to.
No, thank you.
Okay. So at this point in time, if there's no further questions from any commission members, I've entertained a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a site plan for Manginelli for a 760-square-foot accessory apartment at 36 Edgerton Road, as shown on, on title plans. Facts received on July 7, 2017, subject to following conditions of approval, dimensions to be corrected on the plan, and comments of the Fire Marshal dated 7/7/17, and comments from Warren Surer dated 7/7/17. And final inspection by our zoning enforcement officer.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right, it, and I don't see our other applicant for the accessory apartment here, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is a site plan maintenance store and shed for Town of Wallingford Engineering Department at 121 North Main Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin, prepare for a presentation, and Mr. Madarazzo, please note all correspondence for the record.
Mr. Chairman, we have a letter from Robert Boultramitis, town engineer, dated August 1, 2017, from Casey Costello, town planner. A inter-office memorandum to Casey Costello, town planner, from Rob Boultramitis, town engineer, dated August 9, 2017. Application 226-17 dated July 10, 2017, signed by the Fire Marshal. A memorandum to Casey Costello, town planner, from Eric Krueger, senior engineer, dated August 4, 2017, and a set of plans dated May 30, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. The applicants would please introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm Rob Boultramitis, here, town engineer. With me this evening, Police Chief Bill Wright. Will be here presenting the town's application for improvements on property. It's actually eight parcels. I think what I will do, you have a plan set, there's three plans in the set, and I'll go up to the board and just run through, do a quick presentation. We can go back and certainly listen to your concerns, answer any questions you have. So with that, the first sheet in your plan set is an existing condition survey, labeled Sheet Number One. It is an A2 boundary survey prepared by my office, by Jay Soni, who's our in-house licensed land surveyor. So the parcel, let me orient you to the board here. North is actually facing towards me. So this is Wallace Avenue, coming in from Center Street on the left-hand side, North Main Street on the top, Academy Street on the right-hand side, North Elm Street on the bottom. Wallace Avenue, the original right-of-way extends in about 500 feet from Center Street. It's actually pretty narrow as it comes in. It's about 15 feet wide for the first couple hundred feet, and then the remainder is 25 feet wide. The rest of the, I keep calling it the parcel of the town-owned property, it's actually made up of eight individual parcels. And what I did for clarification in response to Casey's comments is show the interior lot lines of those eight parcels. There are three buildings on the property. There's the Uptown Fire Department, that's located at 95 North Main Street, that's in this location. There's, of course, the Police Department itself, located at 121 North Main Street. And there's also a concrete masonry block building, one of the old wooden buildings on property in this area that's known as 43 Wallace Avenue. As you recall, in 2013, the Town of Wallingford made improvements to Wallace Avenue. We improved basically the first 310 feet of the road with streetscape improvements, so that was new curving, sidewalks, brick pavers, decorative lighting, et cetera. At that same time, we also constructed some public parking on the west side of Wallace Avenue in this area, and that provided about 70 public parking spaces at that, that location here. We also did some improvements, some additional parking and storage area that the PD utilizes on the north side of town property in this location. One thing I want to point out is, and you're probably familiar with this, is that the area that the PD uses is basically a straight line, runs along the south side of that wooden building, and then is contained with chain link fencing here, and obviously it's important for that parking and impound area to be, to be secured. So with that, the next sheet in your plan set is the site plan. And there's, you know, two main improvements that we're proposing with this application, and in no particular order. If you drive in from Wallace Avenue, the first improvement would be the provision of new public parking on the west side of Wallace Avenue. That is an area right now that I'd, I'd be hard-pressed to describe as landscaped. It's just, it's overgrown, there's a lot of weeds growing up. The surface itself, it's not really topsoil, it's a bunch of remnants of broken concrete, asphalt, demolition debris from previous buildings, not the, not the prettiest area in the world. So we're proposing 79 spaces on this side, that's a net. That's a net increase of about 62 spaces. And I say that because there are about 17 spaces in Millings presently located in this area. Those would be removed to provide this green area. And again, we'd have 62 net increase of parking spaces on that side. So just a little bit about that lot. Of course, the parking spaces, the drive aisles conform your regulation for size, 9x18 spaces, 24-foot drive aisles. And if you look to the east side, the preserved buffer to the residential properties back here is still in the 45, 46-foot range of, you know, untouched, undisturbed buffer area. And so the second main improvement, of course, is a new maintenance building for the PD that would be accessory, obviously, to their facility at this location. The building is 60 by 60, or 3,600 square feet. As you're all aware, the proposed Wooding Building would be raised with this application. Square footage-wise, footprint relatively about the same. It's about a 3,200 square foot footprint for that Wooding Building, again, 3,600 for the new PD storage building. In citing this building on the parcel, it obviously displaced existing parking. Over the last couple months, myself personally and also the Traffic Lieutenant of PD have been making periodic studies or investigations through here, looking at the actual parking demand that they have in that back lot. And that's really what led us to spending the extra money and demolishing that Wooding Building, because those 12 spaces that we get back, we feel are really needed to meet that peak parking demand, you know, back here for the PD facility. Just kind of a trickle effect, too. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention presently, PD stores some of their amenities over at Washington Street, that some of those things would come here and be stored, and that opens up the building at Washington Street for the expansion and renovation of SCOW and STEM Academy. The next sheet, Sheet 3, is your grading utility plan. Pretty straightforward. The grading required for this activity is pretty minimal. The affected area is hatched out on the plan. We have some new drainage coming in on this side, the east side of the building, just to be able to direct runoff and keep it away from the new building area. This parking area itself, the contours essentially will not change. There is an existing basin and drainage system that runs down the middle of this area, so there's no runoff towards the residential properties. It all stays on-site. And all that drainage runoff actually connects to the storm system in Wallace Avenue, which goes out to the DOT drainage system. Back in 2013, when we did the streetscape improvements, we obtained a permit from DOT to tie into that drainage. And to get that permit, we actually had to assume full development of these parcels for impervious coverage based on the zoning. So there wouldn't be any impact to adjacent properties. Utility is to serve the building for your regulations. Everything's underground. Relatively straightforward construction, and it's really a concise overview of the site plans that are part of the application.
Good, thank you. Will that sum up your entire presentation, Mr. Boultramitis? Or I don't know if the chief would like to make any comments or not? Again, you don't feel...
Not at this time, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mrs. Morgenstein?
I have issues on so many levels, but I'm not sure that they're all planning and zoning issues, is my kind of quandary. Can I defer to Mr. Cohen for a minute, and then I'll...
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, we'll pass on you, then we'll move down the table and come back.
Yeah, and I'll come back.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I looked at this at length, and, you know, I think it goes without saying that, you know, this area in town has been controversial over the last few decades. And I think that the parking part of this is fine. And really, the issues I have really extend into, I think, the planning side of this You know, we just went through a plan of conservation and development study, and this site was highlighted in the report. And although this plan does address some of the comments, I really have an issue with the maintenance facility. And, you know, based on, you know, the POCD, my question is, you know, did you have any... You know, we've got this implementation committee for what's in this plan. And I think that commission that oversees this plan should weigh in on this application. Because this has a, you know, significant impact into this study. So I'm going to ask a couple of questions on that maintenance facility, as far as, you know, what is that going to cost to construct that?
And I realize I use the word maintenance. It's primarily a storage building. The word maintenance is in there because one of the operations of PD that's presently off-site that they're looking to bring and consolidate, you know, into their headquarters area, is the traffic maintenance department. So I don't want anybody thinking that this is a maintenance building where there's maintenance going on. This is a storage building. It's to create indoor storage for things, again, that they presently store off-site, but also for some of their larger equipment that is already on this facility that is exposed to the weather, that we want to avoid. You know, equipment like this, the, you know, the Investigation Response Units, the numerous trailers, et cetera. So the word maintenance, the only maintenance that would be going on in there is the fabrication of some street signs. So it's more of a storage building.
Fine, but the question I asked was, what is it going to cost to construct that?
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. I got myself sidetracked. We have budgeted $200,000. It is in the 1718 Capital Nonrecurring Account, that's already approved, that Capital Nonrecurring. The $200,000 is an estimate based on, this is a very similar facility that the Fire Department just constructed over at their headquarters on Masonic Avenue. Their building was slightly smaller. They were able to construct that building for about $144,000, all in with heat, site work, gas line connection, et cetera, et cetera. Our building's slightly larger by 33%. So again, our budget is $200,000, and, you know, we feel we'll bring it in for that.
Okay, you know, you're going to knock down the existing building. You know, is it at all feasible to rehabilitate that, too?
It has been looked at. The building is 28 feet deep. It is really not deep enough for a lot of the equipment that they have. The access into the building could really only come from one side, that's the PD side. You know, so without opening it up and starting to displace some of that public parking on the west side, accessibility to the building makes it infeasible. But the biggest thing, it's a concrete masonry block building, and the structure itself makes rehabilitation or repurposing for this use, you know, cost ineffective. You know, and we did look at it because it's there. I mean, we had to look at it.
Yeah, I'm still greatly troubled by the POCD. And, you know, this really, in effect, eliminates future use of this lot for what the POCD really, you know, points out.
If I may interrupt, because that...
Yeah, go ahead.
You guys, you did a lot of work, your POCD is relatively new, and a lot of work goes into that. Does that, does the POCD, and I'm not being facetious, does it suggest that PD should leave that facility and go somewhere else?
No.
Okay. So really, and I didn't intentionally make it part of my presentation, but I'm glad I did point out, the line that basically exists between the public portion of these properties, that northern limit, what PD currently utilizes, is unchanged. We're not encroaching, you know, southerly into that public area and minimizing what that property could be in the future. You know, so I think we've actually preserved that here.
You know, positioning it, in my opinion, where it is, really, you know, prevents a much better use in the future. You know, is there any way to get that, you know, closer to the rear of, you know, the current police station?
In citing the building, I look, I think, at really every alternative. Bringing it up closer to the rear of the existing PD, as I mentioned, wherever we put it, we're going to displace available parking. This had the least amount of impact. By bringing it up into that smaller area, bringing it westerly, the impact to the lost parking, you know, was too great. I think to make that up, then we would have to start to expand southerly into what's the public area.
You know, did you look at any other alternatives? I mean, does it have to be on this property at all?
Well, I will let the chief answer that. You know, but in all the meetings I've had with him, I think it's very desirable for the PD to get all of their off-site operations under control at one location. You just streamline things, and it makes you more efficient.
So if I could kind of maybe help to set the stage, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Currently, the Police Department is primarily located on North Main Street. We also have an off-site facility underneath what's presently used by SCOW, which they're looking to rehabilitate for their own use. And right across the driveway from SCOW, we're in yet another building where our sign shop is located. All three of these facilities are critically important for our operation day-to-day, and I'm looking to economize and create some more efficiencies by getting us all into one location. The building that we're proposing is going to house what equals to be just about a quarter million dollars' worth of emergency services equipment, which currently sits outside. And the longest piece of equipment is over 50 feet long, and it's a truck-and-trailer combination. And when Rob and I met on this project, if you will, our critical thought was getting that truck-and-trailer in and out of that building in the most feasible manner, and that's locating the building, I think, where Rob cited it, to take advantage of the driveway that we currently have, which leads to this parcel. When it snows, once Public Works is done with their work, it takes us another, depending on how much snow we get, six, seven, eight, nine hours, with five, six, seven, eight officers, who could be assigned to do something else, to dig this equipment out so that it's in a state of operational readiness all the time. We've invested a tremendous amount of money in this equipment, and I can sit here in front of you and assure you that it's starting to rot away, literally. I'm having a lot of difficulty with equipment that's not even 10 years old from being out in the elements. And I need to get it undercover. I need to get it in a building. We've done all we can with the property that we have to do the best we can with this equipment. And the time has come that I need to get it under storage, and at the same time, get all of our resources into one location for efficiencies that I previously mentioned. So I'm hoping that kind of sets the stage of kind of where we are over there. We do the very best we can with what we have, but the time has come that if I don't move this gear into good storage, I'm going to start to really spend a lot of money on maintenance of it, which will really, really be terrible, to be honest with you. If that helps.
Thank you, chief.
And one more thing, if I can, about the, you know, the location of the building, is it cited here? To the chief's point, the truck-and-trailer combination, I neglected to mention in my presentation, this is actually a drive-through structure. That's why you see that pavement on the backside, the east side of the building as well. It gives them the ability to open a garage and actually pull the whole thing through, similar to the fire station. So that's how the whole circulation pattern on the site and where the building was cited was determined.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not going to belabor this. I'm going to wrap up. You know, again, my objection is really, in my opinion, I don't think this fits into our POCD. And with that implementation committee we have, I really feel strongly that, you know, they should, you know, look at this before we move forward with this. And, you know, there's a couple, you know, Page 30 and Page 33, you can read the comments on, you know, what the report says about, you know, making town center vibrant. I don't think this does that, you know. But I sympathize with the equipment. I understand that. But, you know, I think this is a real important piece of property that, you know, we really got to make some, you know, good decisions on this, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I guess we'll go back to Mrs. Morgenstein, and then we'll go down this side.
Thank you, yeah. So I think Jeff put it very well. We worked hard on the plan of conservation and development. It's pretty classic that we're, you know, getting toward a year out and no implementation has been undertaken. And we are now faced here at the Planning and Zoning Commission with a plan that really, we've got these big problems, we need to rectify them, help save us. So, yeah, I took a couple of notes. So here we are once again with a quarter-million-dollar piece of equipment that we're looking for a home for. This sounds mighty familiar to me. The cemetery needed a home for their digger, and so the town and the powers that be put together a plan after the fact. I find us after the fact on an awful lot of things. So tearing down the Wooding Building, yeah, we knew that was coming. It's probably a year or two ago that the study was done, and no word was really ever gotten to the public about whether it was salvageable or not, but it seemed pretty obvious that it wasn't. Yeah, I agree with Jeff. This maintenance building is in a place that should be a place of pride, a place that's a center of this town. We bought this property really for a retail price. When the plan did not go through the way the powers that be wanted it to go through, we've let it sit here, and we've let it become, I would call your weedy area, a wildflower place at this point. I think you're right, it's probably rubble and such, but the nature has taken it back a bit. And I disagree with the idea that the parking is not a problem. To put in another Millings parking lot, we have our one temporary Millings parking lot where people park willy-nilly. After winter's over, we've, you know, plowed up the Millings, and you guys have to re-line the lines. I had a friend get actually blocked in there one night because people parked behind him, and there is no rhyme or reason to the parking. I don't think that another temporary parking lot is the answer. We need to solve this lot's issues. And once we put more money, we asked, I wasn't going to ask cost because I don't know that that's the purview of planning and zoning, but since we've asked the cost of this maintenance shed, what are we looking at for the cost of a Millings parking lot?
In the scheme of things, and comparatively, frankly, not much money.
Not a lot.
It would be undertaken by the Department of Public Works, based on their availability. We're starting our pavement program now. We'll have an excess of Millings, we'll have the product itself. The one thing that we are going to be doing different, because I've actually been critical of the Millings and the public parking lot, is we'll be chip-sealing it and then striping it, and that makes it a more durable surface. In addition to that, we'll also be chip-sealing the existing parking on the west side for the very same reason. So then we do stripe it, it's more... So then we do stripe it, it's more durable and the lines stay and the parking orientation remains.
And then, once we do that, our temporary parking, which is more or less not temporary, becomes what we have in this site, which is, again, not in keeping with the plan. And so I cannot support this, but I thank you for your hard work, Rob, thank you.
Thank you, other commission members. Mr. Matarazzo.
To weigh in on my end, I actually would support this. I'm tired of seeing this property sit idle. And I think our police department is probably very undersized for the size of our town and how it's grown. And having equipment, I certainly understand the need to keep and maintain the equipment and have quick access to it. You certainly don't want to get a call and drive across town to get your piece of equipment you need. You want to shorten that time and get to where you need to be. I don't think this is a huge impact on the parking. I think, and I've always actually said, we need to make a decisive decision on this parking and stop with the temporary setup here. I've always said that I think Wallingford residents would not have a problem making this a solid parking lot, making it a kiosk, swipe your card, pay for an hour, two hours. I don't think any resident in Wallingford would have any issue with that whatsoever. That parking has helped downtown become vibrant. And I think we kind of need to make a decision and make that, just make it parking and get some revenue coming into the downtown area, obviously with paid parking. Middletown has done it, I think Maryland's done it, and it's worked out very well for them and their downtown. So I would sure support this. I think it's about time this property starts getting used and come up with a permanent usage. And I think expanding the Wallingford, otherwise, I can tell you what's going to happen. It's just like the fire department, Wallingford PD is going to have to move.
Right, and we better find $15 million or...
So spend it minimally here on property we already own or go and build a whole new multimillion dollar facility somewhere else, so.
Thank you, Mr. Matarazzo, other commission members.
Sure.
I actually, being the new guy here, I have just a couple of quick questions.
Mr. Michael.
Excuse your microphone, please, Steve. There's a button, a button to your right, just push it forward.
New guy problems. Excuse me.
We get the right color tie, though, Steve.
Thank you, good choice as well.
Depends on who's judging ties.
I do have just one question, as far as, it sounds like there's trailers as well as emergency equipment that's looking to be stored in here? Is that correct?
So presently, the town owns, the police department owns a 53-foot trailered command center, an investigative services vehicle which we use for major accidents and significant crime scenes. We have two portable trailered light towers. We have a Dodge Sprinter van, which our SWAT team uses. And the SWAT team has two enclosed trailers themselves. Just to kind of clarify how we came to own all this equipment, you'll remember that, or if you don't, I'll certainly give you all the information I have. The anthrax that killed Ottley-Loverin down in the valley originated from the postal distribution facility on Research Parkway. Following that event, the postal service nationwide installed a biological detection system in which still to this day, right now, uses a series of tests to sniff, if you will, all the incoming mail into that facility. And should the biological detection system alarm trigger, the chances of a false positive are slim, which would then stand up a very rigid plan that the police and fire department put together along with the help of the United States Postal Service. And we've been told, and maybe it's changed since 9/11, but we've been told that we very well could be on our own here for a couple of days until the government could stand itself up and get in here and manage that event. And that's where all that equipment came from. There were grants available to us, we took advantage of it. And to Mrs. Morgenstein's comment about now trying to come back and have the storage facility or capability that we need, at the time that we took delivery of all this equipment, our primary concern was public safety, and it remains today. And so where we purchased this equipment through a lot of grant money without storage, we did that initially for the reasons as I stated. And we need this equipment. And I need it to be in a state of operational readiness. I can't have it snowed in and unavailable to us when we need this gear, whether it's a SWAT call out or something different. This building or this facility that we're proposing would allow us to have access to it even if it's a cold storage environment, that it's at least dry. And that's kind of the background of how we came to own all this gear. And we need to maintain it, and this is the reason that we're before you today.
Thank you. Part of my line of questioning was, you know, has the department done an audit and an inventory? And are all of these pieces of equipment absolutely necessary? As far as, then, is the building necessary to store them? You know, and if the department has done that, that at least answers the first half of the inquiry. So thank you.
Is that it? Other commission members?
Hey, so I'd just like to make some comments. I certainly appreciate the comments that other commission members have made concerning our plan of conservation and development and as far as how this property has kind of lingered as far as what the town is planning to do with it or not planning to do with it. But correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, what's being presented here is not a really permanent plan. Is that correct? It's a, right now, it's a temporary lot and I think that's one of the reasons why it's not proposed to be paved and trying, I guess to some degree, to keep the cost down. Is that fair to say or no?
I think it is fair to say, and I think I, you know, I think I was quoting the newspaper saying it's temporary. And I call it long-term temporary until, you know, the town knows what they ultimately do want to do with the disposition of this property. You know, one thing I can promise you, as a town engineer, I won't be the deciding factor on what ultimately happens. But I think this is a great use going forward. I think there's been a public outcry for more parking. We're talking about being consistent or not being consistent with the plan of conservation and development. I think the plan is very consistent with your recent modification of the CA-6 zone and changing the parking density for developers, for landowners. I think that's predicated on the town providing more public parking in and around the CA-6 zone. So I think this is, you know, very consistent with some recent actions by this commission. The other thing I'd like to say is, this is the CA-6 zone. In reviewing your regulations, government buildings, facilities, uses are permitted by site plan. So, you know, the PD presently operates under a current site plan. And quite frankly, accessory buildings to those uses are also permitted. You know, so I think this is consistent with the CA-6 zone.
And if the town were to look to develop this property, the Wooding property, and if for some reason, I know there's some concern as far as the placement of the building and how that may impact it, I candidly don't have a problem with the building being there because certainly with the chief had mentioned and what you had mentioned, makes a great deal of sense to me. I think it's important to protect the assets of the town. But if there was a plan to develop the Wooding property, and maybe in conjunction with the other properties, the section of the property where the building is located, okay, as far as being able to develop the broader property and to have that included in the development, would that not have a very negative impact on the police department and the parking that's already there?
Absolutely, and that's why I don't think there would ever be part of a plan to develop the balance of the property. So, you know, again, that south line that the PD facility presently occupies, they need that, they need that now, they're going to need that going forward. This building is wholly within that. Again, there's no encroachment southerly into what could be available for some different use of the property, so.
So again, if this broader property wanted to be developed, to be able to make use of that portion of the property, that would perhaps result in having to relocate the police department or else find some space where they can have their impound and have all of their other assets, which would seem not to be a very good idea as far as dividing up the assets. And again, as what the chief mentioned, we'll have police officers shoveling out somewhere else.
And that's the case, Mr. Chairman, with or without this building? They already need all of this area.
Yeah, all the area. My, you know, my issue is with, and I think you partially addressed it, it's with the parking as it is. I know you and I talked about, I asked you just before, I think we'll celebrate Wallingford to get a couple of cans of paint, some paint brushes, and we'll re-line the lot. That's one of my issues with the existing lot right now. That, when you say there's 70 parking spaces there, there's really one parking space. It's just a big lot that for over the last year and a half hasn't, you know, hasn't been lined, hasn't been striped. We have, I don't know if there's what, four or five handicap spaces, there's nice signs there. My concern is just the lack of maintenance that's been done on that lot. Certainly, tell me a little about the chip sealing and how that's going to be better than what's on the west side of the lot? And tell me when the west side of the lot is going to, I know it's not your issue, but you're representing the town. When is that going to get striped?
So as part of this application, if approved, we would also be chip sealing the west lot, the lot we're talking about. So presently, that surface is ground-up pavement milling. So, you know, town goes in, we mill the roadway, we get the little pieces, we lay it down, spread it out and compact it. But it's essentially, it's a gravel, so it moves. So when you paint your parking stalls on it, as the gravel moves, you lose your striping. So what the chip seal would do, the chip seal process is applying a liquid asphalt, a layer of small stone, another layer of liquid asphalt and more small stone, and it binds up into a hard surface. You know, it's not as durable as pavement, but it's probably an eighth or a tenth of the cost. And if you apply the paint markings to the chip seal, you're going to get a lot more durability and it's going to last longer.
And just with this plan, what's the timetable for this plan?
That's the area that it's really not me, because it will depend on, you know, we anticipate that Public Works will be constructing this new parking lot as well as doing some site work on the PD side as well. You know, and it depends on the availability, their resources and the priorities at the time. You know, with your approval, I'm hopeful we could do something literally before Celebrate Wallingford this year.
Yeah, I guess if, and again, I'm sure you have your own sequence as far as what, you know, what needs to be done. But it would, to some degree, it would seem to me that one of the more, if we approve this application, one of the more important issues would be is to take care of the, you know, take care of the storage building. Because that, you'd certainly want to see that done before the winter. And before I'd like to see any work done on the east side of the parking lot or creating a parking lot on the east side, I'd like to see the west side that completed and that lined and especially have that line prior to Celebrate Wallingford because, as you know, that's, it's been in a state of disrepair. I know there's been some improvements made to it, but that parking lot hasn't been striped in probably a year and a half, so. Casey, do you have any comments on the application?
A couple. In terms of the parking lot, or the sort of the public parking lot, I do, when we were holding the meetings for the POCD and we were talking about the center of town, we had a workshop specifically about the town center. And it actually surprised me at the time, but the majority opinion was of the public that attended was that this area would best serve as a parking lot. And I think that's consistent with what Rob is talking about in terms of serving some of the other buildings in the area and some of the other parking needs in the area, which I think is also something we talked about when we modified the CA-6 recs. So from my perspective, I guess I'm a little... I saw this as being consistent with what we've talked about in terms of the parking. And it still leaves it temporary enough that if somewhere down the line, the town wants to look to develop the property, then we still have the ability to do that. But I think, I think it's a benefit to the town to provide this additional parking. In terms of the maintenance building, really, I think Rob pointed it out, I mean, it's a permitted use in the zone. So really, the question before you is, does the plan comply with the zoning regulations or not? Certainly, you are the entity, the sort of keeper of the POCD. So if you, but that is enacted, so to speak. And backing up the implementation committee, the reason there are many members from many different boards and agencies is because it's not all stuff that can be done by planning and zoning. There are a lot of different entities and agencies involved. And the implementation committee is intended to help everyone cooperate in sort of moving forward with the recommendations in the POCD. So, but the POCD, your role in enacting the POCD is primarily related to how you write your zoning regulations. That's how you take your POCD and you apply it on the ground. So because this is a currently permitted by right use, really, the question before you is, does it comply with the zoning regulations or not?
Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Morgenstein?
So I have a couple of comments now. Am I not on? Okay, Chief Wright. I certainly appreciate and would express the need for public safety. You've certainly clarified that very well. Still doesn't make me happy. As I look at your building, if we were to parcel out things, police station, southern end of this lot, you're certainly within the boundaries if we were to separate the two. So to the point of, do we meet the zoning regulations and do I want to keep our public safe? Yes, so you've certainly convinced me of your need for this building. Do I, again, wish it were otherwise, given the order of things? Absolutely, I think we all do. So now we come to the parking lot. We've got the street, we've got the streetlights, we've made it nice. I don't think I believe for a moment that anytime very soon temporary becomes a plan that will suit this site in a manner that, if you look at drawings in the POCD of what our center of town should look like, bicycle access and such, it looks like we have, again, put some landscaping in here. So I'll be interested to hear from the public. And you certainly have any number of people who live right around this area. This is not my dream for this space, but certainly everybody's needs, especially public safety, are certainly huge here. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, one final comment, then we'll go out to the board.
Yeah, just to clarify my position here. As I said when I started, I'm fine with the parking. You know, it all comes down to the temporary storage building. And, you know, once it's built, it's going to stay there. It's, nothing will happen to it. I do disagree that, you know, considering the POCD, it does conform to the regulations, you know, there's no question there. But I do believe that, you know, not following our POCD is a valid, you know, reason to deny this. And again, I stated when I started that, you know, we have a... And again, I stated when I started that, you know, we have a 10-person implementation committee that I really, really think they ought to weigh in on this application. You know, that's, you know, their job to, you know, move the P O C D forward, you know, have another set of eyes on this, come up with some other, you know, suggestions, alternatives, and, you know, go from there. And, you know, maybe we need a legal opinion on whether or not we can deny this from a P O C D perspective, because I think that's a valid reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. If ever so the public like to speak on the application, please come forward, name and address. Yes, start with the gentleman in the back.
Paul Chardillo, Two Bay Berry Drive. I first became aware of this, reading about it in the Record Journal recently. And one of the questions I have is, is this shed going to be built on what is existing police department property? Or is it being built on the footprint of the Woodding Kaplan lot that was purchased 25 years ago for a million and a half?
Mr. Voltermannus, would you like to answer that question, please? It's being built wholly on one of the eight individual parcels that would have came when the town bought the Woodding property.
Okay. Can it be built on the police department lot?
No.
Okay.
And it's just simply a function of the size of the lot and the size of the existing, you know, the old state armory. No, there is no room.
Okay. You know, I'm sympathetic with what we're hearing from the police chief. I think that, I said this many times, safety should be our number one concern. Having said that, apparently, the equipment that is being, going to be moved in here is resident somewhere else. So can that need, and I'm not trying to solve this problem here.
I understand it.
Can that need be filled somewhere else so that we can go about the business of marketing and developing this property, which has already cost the town four or five million dollars?
I think, and I'll let Mr. Voltermannus answer the question as far as where the equipment right now is residing. But again, when I'm looking at the plans, and I believe Mr. Voltermannus, you know, indicated that the parcel that this building is being placed on, if that were to be incorporated into a broader plan for the development of the Woodding property,
Right.
Okay? Then that would create an issue with the police department, because right now, the police department has its, I believe it's an impound lot, and other vehicles are parked in that area. So that would mean you'd be eliminating a substantial number of parking spaces for the police department, which would then perhaps make the existing police department, I don't want to speak for the chief, but I think it would make the existing police department, I won't say inoperable, but it would clearly create problems for the department. I don't know, chief, if you'd like to comment on that, please.
I believe that, and Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, the actual police department property ends right outside the building, almost literally. And once you cross over to where both our employees park and where that equipment's parked that are depicted in the photographs, that, I believe, is a part of the, or one of those eight parcels that makes up this piece of property we're talking about. So if we were to be displaced from, if I'm understanding the question, if we were to be displaced from all of the area that is truly outside of what's the police department property itself, we'd be parking much like we used to at the time that the town took ownership of this property. On Academy Street, all of the on-street parking on North Main Street, down behind the banks at Simpson Court. And we, I don't know how we could withstand that now. But to answer your question, Mr. Chardillo, all of the emergency services equipment that we're talking about is currently housed on-site.
So it sounds like we're already occupying a portion of the Woodding Kaplan site?
The Woodding site.
The Woodding site.
Yes, sir.
It's a real dilemma, but it seems like it's a dilemma that the town has created for itself. One of the other questions I want to ask tonight that relates to this, Mr. Chairman, does the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, this commission, does it play a role in approving municipal projects, the plans for those projects? In other words, did the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the plan to purchase Woodding? I know you weren't there.
Yeah.
If you want me to answer that?
Sure, if you would, please.
The planning, ultimately, purchase of property is the decision of the town council. It does have to get referred to the planning, the planning side of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a referral, or for a referral or a recommendation. If they, if the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the purchase of the property, that's fine. If the Planning, if the Planning Commission recommends against the purchase of the property, the council then needs, the town council then needs a supermajority in order to pass the decision. So there's some influence there, but really, when they're really looking at it, is in this capacity.
So you're not at approval? And I was looking at the charter today, and it does say here that the mayor, when he presents his budget, he should be presenting a plan that is acted upon and considered by the town planning commission, which I assume is his body. But it doesn't mean that they have to take it as an approval. They can listen to you and go ahead and do it anyhow.
Right. And depending on where we are in the fiscal year and what the project is, a lot of times, those projects come in through the six-year capital and non-recurring budget. So we have that portion of the budget developed. It is reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's, that's where they make their recommendation, if it's within the six-year cap and non. If it comes up over the course of the year, it becomes an individual referral.
Yeah. Well, it's a real dilemma. I think I, you almost have to approve this unless you want to stand up and say, well, we're really not concerned about the police department. But having said that, I would say that as a longtime resident, I have been very disappointed with, as I'm sure a lot of people have been, with this particular property. And I've been trying to identify where the responsibility lies. It seems to me that when we make a decision to spend two or three million dollars, we ought to have a completed project that's approved in writing so that we know what we're going to do with that project. And in this case, it almost seems like we purchased it on speculation. And the bigger issue that that impacts for me is on the tax side. I've been a vocal critic of the taxes that have been levied by this administration, predominantly because of some of the practices that they've employed. And in this case, I think the responsibility sits with our mayor, because he's been the only constant for 25 years. So somehow, maybe we need to split this commission, have a planning commission and a zoning commission. We're not planning properly, and it's costing the town and the taxpayers millions of dollars. And that's just not acceptable when you consider the environment that we're in today with the state collapsing, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I'll leave it to you to decide whether to go ahead and approve this. My input would be that, based on the chief's input, I would say to go ahead and approve it. But I would also send a very strong message to the mayor and the council to say, look, let's get moving on this property. Let's draw some lines. Whatever the police department needs, let's give it to them. But let's go out and develop this property, because land should be allocated based on its best and highest use. And a storage facility, all we're doing is reducing the value of the properties. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members? Yes, gentlemen in the back.
Larry Morganstein, South Main Street. I guess it is...
Sir, if you could maybe just get a little bit closer to the microphone so they can pick you up, please.
It's a pretty complicated issue. That goes without saying. I see it as, there's two components that we're looking at. There's the police side of it and the public safety and the storage side. And then there is the rest of the property and the long-term planning and use of that property. This is a question to the chief. I go to the council all the time, and I recall that in the last year or two, it sounded like there had been talk about relocating the police station for a while, but that, it seemed that through you and other people there, it seemed that the station as it is, where it is, had met all the needs that you had. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So at that point, the storage, was that considered? Was this part of the plan in staying in that area or not? Or is this something that's kind of come up since that?
So backing up a little bit, well, 10 years ago now, we had proposed a new building on this site. And if I recall correctly, the estimate at that point was 24 or 25 million dollars on a piece of property that the town already owned. And that became the non-starter. And I suspect that price tag today, and I'm not in that business, but I suspect it might be 32 or 33 million. And I suspect that would be a non-starter today. Whether, not to answer your question, Mr. Morganstein, whether or not the storage facility was considered a few years ago, I can only speak for myself since February of 2015. And it's been a goal of mine to have a storage facility put on our property, if you will, or put in this location, to get all this equipment inside. And among other competing interests for that same small pot of money that the town has to work with, certainly, finally, I think this has come to where, you know, it's come up on the list. So to answer your question, as of a few years ago, it was one of my goals. It's in my five-year strategic plan to get this equipment undercover. And I guess that's what brings us here tonight, and that's all I can really speak to.
Yeah, okay. So because part of my concern is that we talk about planning and zoning and long-range plans, and that brings us to the P O C D. And I kind of see the two components related in that we get this equipment, and we need that equipment, there's a public safety need, but we leave it out, and then we're backtracking saying, well, we have this essential equipment, but we've never really thought about how we maintain it and store it. And there's a legitimate need there. And then we have the rest of the Woodding Kaplan property, which has languished for years, and we kind of kicked the can down the road. We have temporary parking that was installed in 2013. Well, it's almost four years of temporary. Now we're talking about adding to the temporary. And I don't know what temporary means anymore as a taxpayer. Commissioner Madarazo talked about making it a property, we need the parking. But if we're going to do that, let's do it right. It could be a property and parking that brings in revenue. But we don't get that if we do the millings and leave it and the lines disappear. And we don't get the landscaping either. I mean, it's a blight. We're asking people to come into a vibrant center of town, and it's a valuable piece of property. If we're not going to develop it with housing or retail, which was the hope originally, let's have it be something we're proud of in terms of the parking, the landscaping. You go in there and you see the overgrowth. We put up these lovely lights, but then it peters out, and you got this really kind of blighted landscape back there. And I don't know, I guess people use it because it's necessary, but it's not attractive, and it doesn't really say to the town that we're invested in this in a real way. I guess I'd really like to see us make a commitment to this and make a plan and make a commitment. I think the storage has to be. We've kind of put ourselves in a hole, we need to protect our investment with it. There's a legitimate need. But we still have the parking or the land, whether it could be developed. This temporary, I don't think serves our need. It doesn't serve our revenue stream. It doesn't serve the P O C D in making us more attractive. I just would like to see this not be temporary. I'd like to see us do something that moves us forward one way or another. We've really been doing this for too long. And I would hope that, maybe we could separate this out. I appreciate Commissioner Cohen suggesting. We have an implementation commission. I followed the P O C D through all of it. And the people that did the study with you, their last recommendation that was their fervent hope that if it's going to make any difference, what they've seen with other P O C D commissions is that there's, that there would be an implementation committee that's functional, that would really be on top of this. And I think we're making a mistake, again, where we set up this structure, but then we don't utilize it properly. I don't know that the implementation committee has met at all since that decision was made.
Yes, it has.
It has.
Three times.
Oh, really? And what has come out of that?
We've sent, well, if you, again, you're familiar with the plan of conservation development. There is various each, whether it be agency, commissions, whatever, there are action plans and goals, set short-term, medium-term, long-term goals. At our first meeting, we had discussed what, and I think our first meeting, Casey, was probably two months, three months after we adapted the plan.
I would guess like three months, yeah.
And we had just an initial report as far as what the various agencies, commissions, how they were proceeding. Our next meeting, I believe, was scheduled for, was it September or October we looked at?
For next coming up?
Yeah.
Yeah, because in the summer, it's too hard to get everybody together.
And then with that, we're looking for, again, looking at the various, you know, agencies, commissions that have responsibilities within that plan to give an update as far as where they are with respect to those items that are tagged for them. You know, first, looking at the immediate or short-term plans, and then seeing how people are progressing toward the medium or the longer-term plan. So that's where the implementation committee is.
That's encouraging. So if I went to the town website and I look under commissions, boards, and stuff, is there anything there? Where would the public be seeing this? Because I think...
Be seeing what?
Minutes for meetings, agendas.
Casey, as far as you, there's minutes taken for the implementation committee, is that not correct?
There are, yeah.
And so those should be filed with the town clerk, is that not correct?
Yeah, I'm not sure that they are, though. I'll have to double-check that.
Would you please double-check, and if they're not, please make sure that they are filed?
Yeah, I think it would be useful if, like with other boards and commissions, that you could see that that is happening and look at agendas, meeting times, and also the minutes, so that you would see that there is progress being made, that there is...
No, absolutely. I think you bring up a good point. If the minutes are not filed with the town clerk, we'll certainly make sure that they are filed.
Yeah, I think that would be really useful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other members for the public? Yes, this lady up front.
William Jones, Winstock Hill Road. There have been plenty of applications and proposals put before the commission that have been approved and allowed to exist that are glaringly in opposition to our P O C D, and none of them are nearly as important as our public service. This property has been a white elephant in our town. Taxpayers are still suffering from this purchase made prematurely, seemingly on a whim. Taxpayers are still suffering from this purchase made prematurely, seemingly on a whim, with no plan in mind. No one can decide what to do with it, so nothing ever gets done with it. Whatever imaginary future buyer anyone ever thought of, they haven't shown up yet. The department outgrew its original or main home decades ago. Storage was always a problem. By forcing the department to spread its resources throughout the town is crippling our security, misusing our officers, and using up our services that could be going in other directions. Emergency equipment needs to be available when it's needed at that time, not at a later time when it's easily accessible or easier to get to from snow removal or et cetera. As storage is now, is simply not efficient if everything has to be in different places. You're just not using your resources in an efficient manner. And I think we would like to move away from that in this town. We're very fortunate to have the specialized equipment. We can't squander it. I applaud Chief Wright's concern in wanting to preserve it to its best and maintain it. There are too many town properties and town equipment that are left to decay like this property. Granted, this one is a little bit bigger than most, and it's right in the heart of town. So, there's more people that see it, it's more noticeable, everybody knows about it. Until you can come up with a buyer or a solid plan on what to do with this property, make use of it, it makes more sense to have everything that the police department needs right at their fingertips rather than have them scurrying around town to store this and pick up that. And honestly, in an emergency situation, I hope it never happens where we need this equipment, but when we do, we'll be glad that they can access it at a moment's notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members from the public who'd like to speak on the application? Seeing none, before I ask for additional comments from the commission. Casey, I know you had presented some comments to Mr. Baltermitis as far as the plan, and I know he revised the plans. Have all of your comments been addressed?
The one that, if you're inclined to move forward tonight, the one that I think is still sort of out there, and Rob touched on it, is the commission should make a decision about whether you want additional, like, more formal landscaping adjacent to the parking lot, or if the existing greenery is acceptable.
If, what would you propose perhaps for some additional landscaping?
Well, if you wanted more screening-type trees, we could pursue that.
And that's something that you could have, if we were, if we were, if we decided to approve this with the condition that Rob, Mr. Baltermitis, work with the planning department as far as providing a plan for some additional landscaping or screening in the parking lot? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that would be acceptable to the town?
Okay. Other final commission, members from commission?
Mr. Menard. I've got a couple of questions. One is, how many parking area is used for vehicles that have been impounded?
Right now, there are seven or eight out there. It changes continually as the court releases these vehicles, as we bring them in from a new case. Seven or eight on any given day? I think there's seven or eight out there now.
Most of these on other towns being parked away from the station, they have a parking area where they secure them away from the station. Like in Meriden, if you have an impounded car, as far as I know, they're not parked at the station. So, that would give you some more parking there.
I believe that, and I want to be careful because I'm not certainly sure, but I believe Meriden utilizes a space by their old landfill over on Evansville Avenue, which I think is under at least video security. But I'm not positive. I see some cars there from time to time, but I'm not positive. But if I can speak to the surrounding towns, both North Haven and Cheshire, I'm not sure what they do, sir.
Okay. Oh, the other thing is, I believe the same thing as Mr. Mazuraka here, that I think we should have that parking go ahead and paved and bring up to date and have parking meters in there, have a gate like they have in Meriden, and at least get some money out of the, our million dollars that we lost. All ready?
Thank you, Mr. Menard. Any other commission members before we wrap things up? Mrs. Morganstein and Mr. Kohan, and then we'll let you gentlemen make any final comments, and we'll move up there.
Well, I guess if we're talking that far ahead, a more permanent parking and meters, then I think Mr. Kohan's idea of we can't make a decision on the parking portion of this tonight, might we want to propose the safety of the town and the shed and delaying the parking portion of this decision? Or the shed plus making more appropriate what we have now, but not the wildflower field parking portion?
Other commission members? Mr. Kohan?
I just want to, unfortunately, I guess, revisit the storage facility. And it's probably a little too late at this point, but I'm just going to ask, you know, Chief, you said you've had this problem for 10 years. Is that correct with, you know, your equipment being exposed to the elements?
Right, yeah. So, most of it was purchased in 2007.
Okay. My suggestion would be, and Rob, he can just, you know, give me your quick thoughts on this, would it be feasible to, you know, construct something at the new fire station? For your storage?
So, well, that more than likely would work certainly because storage, I guess, is storage. I'm trying to get everything that we own in one place and keep it there.
Right, right.
Yeah, so, would it work there? Certainly, you know, storage is storage. From a efficiency point of view, that only exacerbates the problem that I'm trying to do by collapsing what I have in one place.
Yep, yep. I think that'd answer, I can't answer that better than the chief just did. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Would you gentlemen like to make any final comments? I suspect you may very well be all talked out.
Can I just make one more comment in regard to this? I think what we're backing up against and what part of the issue is, is one of the, so the implementation, or not the implementation committee, the steering committee for the P O C D, one of the things that was talked about was the issue with SCOW not having enough room and partly, and the police needing to use that for storage. And what came out of that as the recommendation was that we do a facility, that the town do a facilities management plan. And I think that's really what our underlying issue is, is that maybe we need to pursue that a little bit further because that would make some decisions or at least provide some recommendations in terms of where different uses should be locating, how we can best locate them, what the best uses of the various town-owned properties are. So, I think, well, that's not really the subject of this application. I think it raises that point.
Thank you. I guess I'll just make one final comment. Certainly, I've listened to the comments that other commissioners made, the comments from the, from the public. You know, I think we all, you know, have, have been frustrated as far as the lack of development on this property and what's going to happen or not happen with this property. But what I'm looking at, you know, tonight, which is being presented, is clearly it creates, it solves a need for, you know, for the police, for the police department to not have all of its equipment marshaled at one particular place, I don't think is very good from a public safety area. And looking at the parking, is this parking, in my mind, ideal? No, I don't think it's ideal. I'm not sure what the ultimate disposition of this property is going to be, whether in fact it would be parking, whether in fact there would be some other development that is put in there at some time. I think we all have frustration with respect to that. But at least from an interim standpoint, and again, interim, in this town, it could be two years, it could be 10 years. But I think that what's being presented here is something that I could support. I would like to see, though, some coordination between our engineering department and our town planner with respect to doing, you know, the landscaping and all of that, you know, to creating this as far as paid parking and all of that. I think that's something that may be somewhere down the road if, in fact, we're looking at, you know, creating a, this is a permanent parking lot and making it paid parking, you know, that then creates the need to create, I suspect, the whole parking authority and everything that goes along with that. So, is this the ideal plan? No, it's not the ideal plan, but in my mind, I think that it serves our public safety needs, and I think, at least in the short run, it serves the needs of the public. I would come back to, from a, an implementation standpoint, certainly, I think, if it were me, I would look to get the building done first, then I'd certainly like to see the west side of the parking to have that completed and have that lined, striped, and then work toward the other, other eastern parking. So, I guess with that, I think we've probably completed our discussion. So, at this point in time, I would entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a site plan for the Town of Wallingford Engineering Department to construct a new maintenance, storage building behind the existing police station and to expand the adjacent public parking lot as shown on plans entitled Police Station, Storage Building, and Additional Public Parking, 121 North Main Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated May 30th, 2017, revised to August 9th, 2017, subject to the following conditions of approval. Comments from the fire marshal dated July 10th, 2017, comments of the town planner in a memo dated August 1st, 2017, comments from the water and sewer department dated August 4th, 2017, and final plans with landscaping to be coordinated between engineering and the town planner.
We have a motion, excuse me, we have a motion on the application, and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo, voting beginning with Mrs. Morganstein.
Yes.
I would just like to say that, you know, we've had 10 years to figure out what to do with the police equipment, and I'm really disappointed that, you know, it's come down to, you know, today's meeting to, you know, finalize those plans. I think this really is necessary for, you know, public safety. You know, public safety, of course, is, you know, significant, but we've had a lot of time to kind of figure this out, and we haven't. And it really impacts the P O C D. And I, again, I think there should have been a little more upfront discussion about this before it came to a vote tonight. This will pass. I will vote yes, reluctantly.
Continuing with the voting.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen. Chief, I'd like to thank you for the service to the town. And Mr. Baltermitis, thank you for your, your service also.
Thank you for, for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, we're going to number nine, which is a survey waiver request for Castro, 174th South Cherry Street. Again, Mr. Madarazzo, please note all correspondence for the record. If the applicant would please come forward to begin with their presentation.
Mr. Chairman, we have a memorandum to Casey Costello, Town Planner, from Rob Baltermitis, dated July 18th, 2017. And I think that's it.
That's the most recent correspondence, is that correct? Everything else, Casey, everything else carried over from the last, from our last meeting? Again, if the gentleman please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the opportunity coming for the commission this evening. This is in regards of 174 South Cherry Street. Mr. Fida have hired the services of our construction firm to rebuild, actually, to remove the existing porch that is currently in his property and build a new replacement porch, three-story porch. We have submitted the proper planning and documentation through the town planner and forward this information to members of this commission. What we have proposed is to build a three-story porch, and according to some of the requirements, it is only 10 feet from the front of the porch to the curve. We've talked when we were here the last time before this commission and expressed that the engineering department has come out and have installed stakes that are proven where the actual property ends or starts right before the actual porch. We have measured from those stakes to the actual front porch, and it's seven feet, two inches. The requirement is 10 feet. We are not changing the footprint of the existing structure. We are going to construct the six feet, six inches by 21 feet, nine inches long, which is what is pre-existing in this current property. Mr. Fida, who is my client, has invested capital improvement dollars of his own that exceed a little over $47,000. Now, we have also had conversations with the fire marshal who has approved the current site plan that we have forward to the attention of members of this commission, and he had expressed concerns, serious concerns regarding the current condition of this porch to the point that he believes that is a hazard. I have instructed my client that not, to share a notice to his tenants or with his tenants to make sure that they do not occupy or walk or come up this down, up and down this porch because the current condition of this porch is just not habitable. For those reasons, Mr. Chairman, members of this commission, we are asking for a waiver of the survey because we are not changing the footprint of the pre-existing structure, and the engineering department have confirmed this by coming out and staking the property and in the letter that they forward to my attention, the town planner and members of this commission.
Okay. So, if I'm clear, if we approve the survey waiver, you would still, because the setback is 10 feet, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you would need then to get the approval of the Z B A. Is that correct also? Casey, is that correct?
Three months ago, I would have said yes because of the change in the state legislation regarding non-conforming structures. I'm going to wait until we have a legal opinion, but I think that may no longer be the case.
Okay. All right. Commission members with questions? Yes, Mrs. Morganstein.
So, are we saying basically that right now, the back or the side is the only way in and out, and the only way to redo this property is the same amount of porch space as you have now? There's, there's no way because of the height of stairs and the depth to the door to make this ever conform?
Commissioner, that is correct. There is two ways of egress for this building, the back and the front. Just taking, removing what is existing now, it is not only critical because of the condition, but replacing it with what is there is what we are planning and following.
Because there's no other way... Because there's no other way to get the second and third floor people in?
That is correct.
Thank you. Other commission members? Seeing none, any members from the public like to speak on the application? Seeing none, Casey? Oh, yes, excuse me. I'm sorry. Didn't mean to cut you short, sir.
Mr. Ernie Marzullo, I reside at this residence, 174 South Cherry, and would like to see a new porch. The porch is falling into South Cherry Street. So, please.
Good. Okay. Thank you, sir. Casey, any comments that you'd like to make? I see no other comments from commission members. You have any other comments you'd like to make? If not, that's fine. We'll move on.
I do not. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. At this point in time, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a survey waiver request for Castro 174 South Cherry Street.
Second?
Second by Mr. Madarazzo, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening. Gentlemen, you get your porch hopefully soon. There you go. Before we drop down to the rest of our agenda, we do have an addition to our agenda that been requested to look at, and that is from an application from St. Pierre. And I'd like to ask for a motion to waive, waive Rule 5 so we can add the St. Pierre request to our agenda. I assume Mr. St. Pierre is here? Yes. So, I have a motion to waive Rule 5 to include this on our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to waive Rule 5 for the St. Pierre application.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Madarazzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And gentlemen, if you please come forward. And, Mr. Madarazzo, just please note any correspondence or anything for the record, which I believe is the application.
Mr. Chairman, we have an application for a survey waiver, applicant's name Charles St. Pierre.
Would you, I just want to excuse my hat, but I have trouble with sunlight.
Oh, no, that's fine.
Raylights. Yeah, I wanted, we've had a small porch.
I need your name for the record.
Yeah, just please.
Charles St. Pierre.
And your address too, please.
224 Hall Avenue, Wallingford, naturally. I have a porch on my house and it was, the house is very old, but we've tried to keep it, you know, we want to keep making it better, better. And the porch of my house is six by six and I want to increase the length. Originally, I thought 40 feet, but trying to keep away from the direct corner of the house, I decided to bring in a foot on each end. So, it'd be 28, I'm sorry, 28 feet, yeah, 28 feet by six. And it would have the same number of stairs going down to a small sidewalk that leads to the sidewalk. And one of the problems that I, I did have a, this was put together for me by... By a...
Was it Rosalind Page? Is it Rosalind from Wintermoreland?
Yeah, I was looking for it on here. And she gave me this paperwork to, to, to bring up and I believe you have a copy of the layout.
Yes, we do.
That I'm speaking of. But that's what I'm trying, I just want to be able to get an easement so that I can run that porch from one side to the other.
Casey, would you like to comment on the application, please?
Sure. So, from what I understand in speaking with Ms. Page, the, what you have before you is, is not an A2 survey. It's a determination based on, based on where your designated, based on where the designated street line is and based on the existing CAD files that we have in the engineering department, the ones that come up on our G I S. What we had talked about was there appears, so the question is whether or not the commission thinks that's sufficient. Because we know where the, where the front setback is, that becomes less of a concern because it's apparent that there is enough room for the porch from the front. So, really, the question I had was in regard to the side. And what we had talked about was if the porch were to be bumped in a little bit so that we could basically verify, so if it were to be bumped in six feet, which is the sideyard setback, then we could basically verify that we know it's at least as far from the property line as it's supposed to be. I don't know what the outcome of Mr. St. Pierre's conversation with Rosalind about that was. So, what I had represented is that I thought the commission may be more comfortable with the waiver if the porch were bumped inward so that there wasn't as much concern about the side yard.
And we're talking as far as bumping in, if I'm facing the house, it's the right side, is that correct? And you're recommending that the porch be, from what's being presented on this plan, to have it bumped in another six feet because it's offset a little bit from the house right now, correct?
You have an updated one than I do.
Well, I, I hope not. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but...
Yeah, we had talked about potentially moving it in further towards the center of the house.
So, you'd be recommending the porch be, if I'm looking, if I'm facing the house, the right side of the house, that that porch be moved an additional six feet?
That's the property line, yeah.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Sir, you, Mr. St. Pierre, are you under, I don't mean to say, are you understanding, but as far as what the town planner is saying, do you agree with that or, I'd like to get your reaction?
Well, I know that the property in that area for years has been disputed by, and none of our neighbors, I mean, my neighbors know me, I know my neighbors. We've lived there a long time. We've been there since 1973. And surveyors who worked, there's a gentleman down on Maple Street that had hired these attorneys and said that he wanted, my next-door neighbor had a garage replaced that had to be ripped down because of its age. She had a new garage put on the old foundation, right on the same spot. He said her garage was built 30, half her garage was on his property. And she was like, I said, what do I do? I said, well, the first thing I'd do is go to the town and find out why they let you put a porch on somebody else's property, which I understand Casey knows what I mean when you say encroachment because he claimed he owned that land. She paid him $3,000 for that little piece of land that goes down a sandbank to the back of his apartments on Maple Avenue. And when the attorneys came up to talk to me because he said he had a postage stamp, I was on a postage stamp piece of his property, which was about three feet wide, six feet long. He said that was his property. He wanted to claim it. So, I said, I'll give you 100 bucks. That's it. That's all I'm going to give you and the deal's done. And it was done. From the day one, many years ago, I was assured that Old Avenue was a dirt road when that house was built, as were a lot of the other houses right near me. All of those houses were built many years ago. And there were only two people that I remember all these years. When we bought the property from Dan Combs, he was the agent. He said that we owned fence to fence. There were two metal fences. The fences are still there. We've got plants growing around them, but the fences are still there from the day we bought it. And I've never had any disputes from any one of my neighbors in any way, shape or form. None. And they've never said, hey, you know, your driveway's on my property. I said, well, according to the survey is the back corner of the addition you put on your house is my property. And we just worked it out that way. That's the way it is. We, we came to a common agreement as being neighbors.
Sure. No, I understand that.
It worked out fine.
Yeah. And that's between your neighbors, the, at some point, somewhere down the road, the neighbors.
I'm sure my neighbors would love to see the full, like, front porch.
No, I understand. Yeah, no, I understand.
And I'm not, it's not going to be one of these sort of good porches. The people have assured me that when they do the job, it's all going to be made with top-end materials.
No, I understand.
I wanted to bring it, I want to bring it back to that revival. You know, it was, originally it was a queen ant, but now it's taken on more of a Greek revival because somebody had put an addition on it before we bought it, which wasn't finished. We finished the inside of it. He had the outside all the time.
Casey, I guess, I guess I still come back to the question because we're, we're looking at if, how close, if this, if what's being proposed here, if that comes and hits and encroaches into the building lines, is that, is that correct?
Right.
What we have here?
We, right, we don't know if your house, if Mr. St. Pierre's house now is compliant with the setbacks. So, we can't confirm that way based on, we can't confirm based on the existing house that the new porch will be compliant with the setbacks. So, the house can stay whether it complies or not because it's grandfathered in, but anything new has to comply. So, if the, the thinking was in my conversation with Ms. Page was that if you bumped it in the required distance, we would still be making an assumption that, in that we would be assuming that the house is not over the property line, but it might give a greater comfort level. And also, given the fact that it's a porch, you might be more willing to provide the waiver.
Yeah. So, it would seem that, I think what our town planner is saying is there's perhaps, correct me if I'm wrong, Casey, there's perhaps two options here. One option would be to have a survey done, which obviously there's a cost of the survey to see exactly, one, where your house is, but I think we're making the assumption that the house is, well, it's non-conforming, so that doesn't really become an issue at the moment. But to see if the addition that you're putting on of the porch, if in fact that encroaches or not encroaches from what you're, what you're proposing. So, the option would be to go through in the cost of the survey. Another option is to have the porch that you're planning to put on, to have at least on the right side of the porch as, as you're facing the house, to have that reduced by six feet. So, then that would give us a, if other commission members agree with that, would give us a good deal of comfort level that you're not, or that the porch would not be encroaching in the setbacks.
It would be the corner of the porch, right? The outside corner?
Yeah. So, you would, you would make it smaller, basically.
Would I build it on a angle off that end?
Well, ultimately, it's up to the commission. It's not up to me. So, the, the question is really, I think, whether or not, based on what you want to do, if you, if you're asking for a waiver so to not have to get the survey, what, what is the commission comfortable with, with allowing with, based on the survey waiver? I think that what we're talking about is even if you did it at an angle, I, I'm not sure that that gets you where we're trying to get to.
And then from a Greek revival or whatever, it becomes something else? So, again, that's, I, I think those are, and I guess I'd entertain any comments from other commission members as far as, yes, Mrs. Morgenstein.
We simply don't want to okay you building a porch that the next person that buys the house next to you or your house says, I now have an illegal porch and the town okayed it.
Well, I, I spoke, when I spoke with the, the woman about the...
Rosalind Page?
Yeah. She told me, she said, you don't want to get into the backyards in those houses because they've been there for so long and people have had the land for so long that they, everybody just kind of leaves it the way it is. And if you want to put a fence up, you can put a fence up. There's, nobody ever says anything because they know, this is my yard, that's your yard, that's your yard. And I can agree with that. If I have to bump it in six feet, I suppose I could bump it in six feet, but I'll just find some other, after I move it to six feet, I might put a, a shape to it so that it, it'll just look a little neater, if you know what I mean. I, I just want to put something on there so that it does it just like I started to build a porch and I went to the other end of the house.
Well, I think however you...
I could do that. I could do that.
I, I think, again, if we were to approve this, I think what, what we're looking at is, you know, to have it being brought in, you know, by six feet on, at least on that one side. And, you know, again, I appreciate what you're saying as far as all your neighbors get along, but, you know, as Mrs. Morgenstein indicated, that's today, people sell their homes, new neighbors come in and then disputes can arise. So, other commission members with any questions, any comments?
Just to put it out there, the, the six feet was my recommendation based on what I, what I felt I might be more comfortable with, but it's certainly up to the commission. You know, you have a broad range of what, at what point you would feel comfortable requiring the survey or not requiring the survey. And if the survey waiver is approved based on bumping it in, you would, the applicant, Mr. St. Pierre, would still have the option of either getting the survey done or bumping it in with the waiver or whatever else you decide.
Sure. Okay. Mr. Menard?
I, I think we should bring in at four feet.
I think we're starting to nibble around here at the edges. I think our, at least in my mind, sure, other people, I'm sure may have their comments, but I think our town planner has given us some comfort that it's six feet and I'd feel much more comfortable with that than kind of splitting hairs on something. But if no one else has any comments, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, before I make the motion, I just have a question on the motion, Casey. Did, did you want a revised map submitted?
Yes. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a survey waiver request for St. Pierre, 224 Hall Avenue, with the condition that he provide the town planner a revised map, moving the porch in by approximately six feet.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 Yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
And we also thank you for your service and we never ask you to remove your hat. You've earned the right to wear it.
It's, it's bright.
All right, Casey. We kind of move, move on down our agenda, please, going to bond releases.
Okay. Bond releases, what I'm going to ask, well, let me say this. For 10, 11, and 12, I'm going to ask that you approve it pending approval from the engineering department because they just got the referral, so they haven't had time to go out there yet.
Okay.
That number 13 is not ready to be released.
Okay. And then number 14?
14 is.
Is ready to be released. All right. I'd entertain a motion on the bond releases that are recommended by our town planner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve bond release, bond releases for site plan, Davenport Associate, 14 Fairfield Boulevard, site plan, 1070 North Farms Road, LLC for Northrop Industrial Park Road West, and subdivision, 1070 North Farm Road, LLC Northrop Industrial Park Road West, with the following conditions of approval that the engineering department sign off on their request.
We have a motion on the bond releases.
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo, beginning, voting with Mrs. Morgenstein.
Yes.
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 And yes. And then continuing with the releases.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a bond release and reduction for a Barrows 146 East Street.
And we have a motion on that.
Second.
Second again, voting beginning with Mrs. Morgenstein, please.
Yes.
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 And yes. And Casey? And Casey, moving on to our discussion items.
Okay, item number 15 and item number 17 are in regards to changes that were made in the state legislative session regarding, these are some issues that are sort of of interest to planning and zoning matters. So, I wanted to sort of make you aware of them and discuss how to move forward based on the changes. So, the first one is in regard to temporary healthcare structures. The second attachment that I gave you, I think, provides a pretty good sort of summary of what the legislation is anticipating or allowing. And then, the third attachment, the reason I included that, there's been a lot of buzz sort of amongst the planners in the various municipalities about this particular legislation and the copy of the email that I provided you was off of our planners list serve and sort of echoed most of my concerns about this particular requirement. So, basically what it says is that it's legislation that would allow temporary, basically temporary small homes behind an existing home on a residential lot for the purposes of someone that needs full-time healthcare. I think the intention of the legislation is in regard to a relative, but it's not, that's not specified. So, that's one of the concerns that I think we might have is who and under what situations could someone sort of take advantage of this provision? The other thing is, it's contingent on getting doctor's notes to prove that the person needs the permanent healthcare and I, I think as it's raised in there, there, that raises some HIPAA questions, that raises some enforcement questions because that's sort of outside our purview. And then the last main concern that I have is in regard to, so we, we, somebody puts up this house, it's allowed to have or required to have full utilities and then the person who needed that care gets better or isn't living there anymore and, and then we're supposed to go make them remove it. And I just see a lot of challenge in that, given, I mean, you see how many accessory apartments we run into that have, have survived over time despite not being, you know, approved. So, but on the other hand, I think there's some good intention behind the legislation. Obviously, the idea was to recognize that, that we have an aging population and there are a lot of people that are getting into positions where there's a family member that they might need on their property, but that still wants some independence. The legislation allows for the municipality to opt out or to use, you know, basically to modify the regulation to meet what we think is appropriate. One thought I have is that I think our accessory apartment provision serves the same purpose, but sort of anticipates some of the problems that I mentioned. So, one option, now, the one difference there is that the accessory apartment has to be attached to the main house. It can't be a fully separate building, but I'm somewhat of a proponent of that because I think it prevents the problem of having this other house that is supposed to go away at some point. So, one option would be basically to use our existing, just say we, we've dealt with this issue by having our accessory apartment regulation. That, you would still have to choose to opt out if you want to do that. You could choose to, not to opt out, and then we would adopt regulations that are consistent with the legislation. You could choose to opt out entirely, or you could choose to opt out and, and write a sort of modified version of this. If, whatever, if you choose to opt out, you, you do have to hold a public hearing and then the town council has to hold a public hearing. Or then the town council has to make a decision. So, what I'm thinking and what Mr. Seidler and I talked about was potentially scheduling a public hearing to discuss the option of opting out, not necessarily that, that stating that that's the direction you want to go in, but to hold the public hearing, allow people to come and talk, you know, express their positions on the option of opting out.
You see, if the, any town does, does not take any action, this becomes effective October 1st, correct, of 2017?
Yes.
So, there is somewhat of a...
Yes.
You know, of a timing, a timing issue here. Well, there may or may not be depending upon what, what this commissioner may, you know, may decide or what the town may decide. So, I guess I'd entertain, I, I was thinking to hold that, that public hearing in September. I, looking at our agenda, it's not a very challenging agenda.
No.
I don't mean to make light of other people's applications, but it was, it was my suggestion that in fact we hold a public hearing on that. Just to clarify, Casey, and again, I don't mean to jade things one way or another because I think like most commission members, you know, we received this on Friday. I started reading it and, you know, had, you know, some, some issues, some concerns. I think there's some, as you mentioned, there's some very good benefits of this, but there may very well be some unintended consequences that all of a sudden come up. But if we were to hold that public hearing at that particular time, if we decided, and I'm not saying it's predetermined now, but if we, at that point in time, at the end of the public hearing, could the commission then, if it wanted to, make a decision in fact to opt out at that time? Or would there have to be a subsequent, you know, public hearing or some subsequent action?
If you schedule a public hearing to consider the opt-out, then I think under that framework, you could make a decision on it that night. It doesn't necessarily mean you would have to make a positive decision about it, but yes, you could make a decision that night because that's...
Or that particular point on a public hearing could be continued.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, all right, I guess I'd entertain comments from other commission members. Mrs. Morgenstein?
I guess I have some thoughts. Yeah, it's a, it's a whole lot of stuff. And the opt-out talks about, or opt-in talks about it being consistent with the neighborhood and such. Yeah, I, I think the public certainly needs to be involved in this. I certainly could foresee, you know, phone calls coming in. "My neighbor has just put a, a trailer on his property and that on the surface seems like something that should not be allowed." You know, even to the point of really kind of thinking outside of the box, if we're talking temporary structures, would the town that does not have a lot of senior housing that we've tried to encourage, want to encourage some of our developers to say, "Here is a parcel of land that maybe isn't permanently able, such as Garden Lane, to have structures, but could foreseeably have, you know, space made for temporary structures." If, because I think I see, if we're going to opt out, you know, it's kind of like saying to the chief, "Well, you can't have your storage." If we're going to completely opt out, are we in essence saying to people, "When your 92-year-old mother needs to live with you, you're just out of luck" when the intent of this is that we should be providing something? So, I'm just kind of taking it a step further and saying, as we have these discussions, having some thoughts in our mind of what are alternatives? If the lay of the land is not in my backyard, I don't want it anywhere, but that it is a need that still is, is necessary. So, yes, let's have a workshop.
Well, I think we're talking about not a workshop, about a public hearing.
A public hearing, I'm sorry, yeah.
Sure. Other commission members? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think a public hearing is warranted. To be honest with you, the first paragraph of the law, kind of, I don't know, unpaid care, even if you're a relative or a legal guardian, a lot of times you, you do get paid for taking care of your sick relative. Anyway, yeah, public hearing is fine.
If no other commission members have any comments?
Public hearing?
Yeah.
I think, Casey, we will schedule a public hearing on this.
Okay, will you vote to schedule the public hearing, please?
Oh, sure. Do we have a motion to schedule a public hearing on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for our September meeting, September 11th?
Yeah.
To talk about the Act Concerning Temporary Healthcare Structures.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morgenstein. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Okay, Casey, moving on.
Okay, and item number 16, the, our South Central Regional Council of Governments, they're, the RPA component, the Regional Planning Agency component of that cog, they've been asking me, typically, every town has representation on the Regional Planning Agency. And typically, it's someone from the Planning and Zoning or Planning or Zoning Commission. And you go to a monthly meeting, it's on, I think, the second Thursday of the month and in the evening. And so, they have asked me, and now I'm asking you, whether anyone would be interested in being the representative for Wallingford's Planning and Zoning Commission with the Regional Planning Agency. Basically, what you do is, you know how we have to make referrals to them if we apply for a reg change or a zone change or something within 500 feet of the property lines? That's who reviews all of those for all the member towns in our region.
Casey, if there was, I know from my perspective, that really doesn't work into my schedule, but if, if there are no other members of the commission that are interested or able to, to do that, other options as far as having a represent...
They, I, I asked if, if I would be allowed to go and they said they would allow that.
Okay, so we would have, if we don't have someone who's interested in doing that, we would still have representation, is that correct?
Yep.
Are there any members of...
I can't do a Thursday.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not volunteering. I'm just wondering if, you know, we wanted to attend on a kind of one-off basis, you know, certainly be willing to, if you could make it or something like that.
Okay, that would be helpful, yeah.
And again, if you'd, you know, contact Mr. Fitzsimmons too, he may also, you know, be, be able to do that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, so as they come up, I'll be in touch.
Okay.
Great. Okay, back to legislation. The next one listed, for item, for, or the next one, ones you have, on attachment 17A, on the first page, there are two starred items. They're related to each other. They're both related to the 8-30G legislation, which is in regard to the affordable housing requirements. This was vetoed, this was approved and then vetoed by the governor and then overridden. So, it is valid. And essentially, this changes some of the, it makes it easier to get, to sort of reach your, your standards for affordable housing in order to get the moratorium. It changes the timeframe for the moratoriums and how those points are added up. So, it, it, you know, it's, it sort of cuts both ways. I think the municipalities are appreciative to not be forced to do something, but I also think there's a recognition with a lot of us that there is a need for affordable housing in the state. For us, I don't, for Wallingford, I don't think that makes a big difference because I think we have a pretty good, pretty active consideration of affordable housing. Okay, non-conforming uses buildings and structures, this is what I was referencing before. And in the past, the, how most municipalities handled these situations and how it's currently written in your regs is that if someone abandons a non-conformity, building, structure, or use, if someone abandons their non-conformity, they can't have it back. So, if somebody actively changes from a residence on Route 5 to a store, the residence being the non-conformity, they couldn't go back in the other direction. Same thing if you had a non-conforming porch. If you tore it down and then wanted to rebuild it, you wouldn't be entitled to any of the grandfathering that it had before. So, if the porch was too close to the property line, we would tell you that now, for the new porch, you have to come into compliance. This legislation, excuse me, changes that. And I am going to talk to Janice about this a little bit further and specific interpretations, but essentially what it's saying is that the person, the owner who's abandoning their non-conformity, or, let me say this, it's not considered abandoned unless they make a clear representation that it is their intention to abandon it.
So, Casey, when I, not to interrupt you, but I was reading this where it says, it says, "The new law specifies demolishing or deconstructing a non-conforming use, building, or structure is not itself evidence of intent to abandon." I know in the past, and maybe I'm wrong, that if you had a non-conforming building, as long as you kept one side up, then you could reconstruct the building or something.
Here, it was always if you kept the roof up.
If you had the roof...
Yeah, the, we didn't, the roof was what made it a building. So, we always said if you kept the roof...
So, if you kept the roof, but what this is saying, you can completely, is, is this saying you completely, you can completely demolish the building?
Yep.
And then construct a new building?
Right, so if you have something that's not zoned to be there and you tear it down and want to build something that's not, the same thing that's not supposed to be there...
You can do it.
You can, which is a little frustrating from a zoning perspective because it prevents us from, you know, we're trying to move towards conformity.
Make it conforming.
Yeah, so...
All right, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
That's okay, no, so I will follow up with you about, we'll probably have to make a language change to our zoning regs to, to address that. Okay, possible scheduling of workshop. So, the, the main topics that are before you right now are the neighborhood business districts, electronic message boards, and downtown zoning, all of which I think are on the front burner right now, all of which I think are important right now, but all of which I don't think can be discussed in one workshop. So, I'm sort of looking for some direction from you in term, I think we should schedule one workshop for September and pick two items to talk about at that meeting and then we can follow up with another workshop in October and see where we are. You know, discuss the other item and then see where we are with the other.
Sure, I think that's a good idea, but I, I would ask you, because Mr. Fitzsimmons is here, not here, and Mr. Benoit, so I don't think we, you know, at this point, be able to set a definite date in September. I, I guess looking at the items, and I'm just looking at the order that you put them in, it's kind of things that we have, I guess, given some priority to. And I know we had started talking about, you know, a neighborhood business district and, you know, electronic message boards, but we have a moratorium now on, on the message boards, correct? So, not, and that was for nine months or 12 months?
Nine.
So, that's nine months. And when was that put in effect?
I want to say June, but I'll, I will find out.
Okay, so with that one, while that was an earlier item, well, one of the more earlier items that we talked about, we have time, at least in my mind, we have time to look at that. What I'm looking at is, you know, certainly we talked about the neighborhood business district. You know, that's, that's something that is important and we've had some discussion on. So, I, I guess I would look to have that, but when I look at the, all of these, to me, the, you know, the most, the one that I would look to have, that I'd like to see momentum on would be the, you know, the downtown zoning. I think in my mind, that, and, and it's almost to some degree, instead of scheduling two, because I think there would be a lot more comment on that.
Yes.
And it would be at least my, if other commission members agree, to schedule a workshop on that and just only for that in September. Because I think that is going to draw much more interest and especially if we have that, the first item in the workshop. When we, when we get to another item, I think there's some fatigue getting in. So, that would be my suggestion. I don't know what other commission members feel about that.
Agree.
So, let's, let's, let's plan for that, Casey. If you could please send out just an email to everyone asking them for dates in September.
Okay. Yep, great. Okay, administrative approvals. I will leave to you whether or not you have any questions? No, okay.
Questions from anyone?
Okay, the, at the last ZBA meeting, the, the one I would note is item number two, which was a special... which was a special exception request for a, for total garage area of 3,234 square feet, which is a lot of garage. I believe it was for storage for some, some, some other, you know, some, it's for storage, basically, for something.
I think it was more for commercial storage.
No, I think it's for, like, tractors or something that's a hobby of somebody in the families. Yeah, tractor pulls, yeah. But that is rather large, that's a lot of garage.
You think?
Yeah. And, okay, so moving on to upcoming applications, there was one I wanted to point out to you. Oh, just that, it's just sort of of interest, is that the old TD Bank building across from the Y, they're applying to be used as a daycare.
Say this again, Casey, please?
The TD, the old TD Bank building across from the Y, they're looking to, that building's been empty for a little while. Yeah, so they're looking to become a daycare. Okay. Zoning enforcement, like always, I'll leave it up to you. Questions, anything you want me to know, or look into?
Questions?
That's it.
Just one last thing, is as far as the dog pit, the dog pound, I know on a quarterly, or whatever it is, the, what do we call it?
Dog pit?
The...
On refer protection?
Yes.
Not the dog park, the, you know what I'm talking about.
The dog pit, yeah.
Yeah. I know, we've been, should be doing quarterly inspections, I just want to make sure that we're keeping up with that.
Yep.
All right, if there's no further business coming before this commission, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Do we have a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions, we're adjourned. Have a good evening.